A reminder that this is a public meeting. Video and audio recorded for cable broadcast and posterity. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Okay, first item on the agenda is a Form A Plan from Kenneth Nickerson, Main Street Map 16 Lot 36. Step away, sir.
Good evening, everyone. I have a meeting of two budgets changes, so I have a meeting. Form A lot which includes approximately three acres of wetland and all of it is on the eastern side of the property, which I'm looking to separate from the Lot 1 and rejoin with the remaining coal for myself and Taylor. The reason is, a lot of folks have been expressing interest in the property to purchase the lot and a lot of-
The lot or the-
The Lot 1.
Okay.
And a lot of feedback along the lines of it has a lot of wetlands and approximately about three acres of wetlands, so I wanted to take that out of the equation. And it's a lot of its perception. Granted, the amount of upland is really still focused on the western side. Also, I want to retain my options for doing something else with that particular three-acre parcel, including maybe donating it to the town or to the state or conservation, for conservation purposes. I also extended the western property line approximately 50 more feet to the west. And that's it. It's still a compliant lot.
What's this long strip of land? Is it part of this or part of this?
It's still part of, it's part of this.
Okay. What's the reason for that?
Just to give me access to that if I need it.
Okay, and how wide is that?
It's 10 feet.
Not big enough to put a road?
No, no, there's no roads being planned in any case. The purpose of that was really just to separate the wetland from the lot and also give me some options on what I, my options and, you know, what I can do with that particular piece of it.
So this plus this equals 8.53. Oh, no, 11.198.
Plus, yeah, so-
11.198.
Yes, correct.
Okay, I got 8.53 up and I'm sorry. Didn't see the bigger letters, the bigger, the bigger bold numbers.
So the same thing as well.
Yeah, for the most part. I haven't had any of the easterly portion of it tested, but presumably it's all wet.
Any questions from the board?
Is this the lot you're talking about or this lot?
This is the lot.
How's he gonna get access to it?
Still have access on it from Main Street. He also have a footpath, 10-foot access from here. I mean, I still own this property as well, but in case I don't, I no longer own that, I can still access the property from here either.
Can I have a driveway over here?
Potentially, yeah, at some point, away from the wetlands, well, well away from the buffer.
So this is 175, what's this 145?
So this is an existing lot, all of this right here. I'm just basically cutting off the wetland so I can have an option or two to-
What is this, 145, 145?
I believe that is on-
That's to the rock wall and then the balance puts it at 175.
Okay.
Yeah, this is a, this is a stone wall, which for the most part separates the upland from the wetland.
Any questions from the public? No questions. Anyone like to make a motion to approve this?
Make a motion to approve it.
Second motion.
On favor?
Aye.
There you go. So we have the mile out there. Sure, you can sign it. I assume these are, these folded ones are for signing.
Absolutely. I'll get that to you next week or I have a vote tomorrow. I won't be around, but I'll definitely come in next Monday.
Ooh, just have to sign those three. The others are for generation purposes. Who's coming back?
What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna give you one of those copies. And thank you. So what you'll do is all copy, they'll time stamp in the book of page, and now you're gonna return back to me. Mr. Ferry was supposed to appear today with his site plan. I think he will talk to you and you should see him here quite yet. So you wanna move on to-
Okay, let's move on to item C. To review, discuss, and act upon the Chapter 61A notification of Maple Street and map one Lot 4.
So if you recall from our last meeting, there was the Form A application from Mr. Shaw to split some of that residential recreational property and he wanted to remove part of it for a build-up a lot. And then the other part, the part that he's keeping in the build-up a lot, he needs that part removed from the chapel land. And then the remaining of it was gonna stay in it. So the board of selectmen just need your recommendation of whether to take up the right of first refusal and grant that to them.
So the lot would cost the town $250,000.
I think that's what it says.
That's what it has on the piece of paper.
Yeah.
So... I don't know that, does anyone here have any reason to recommend that the town spend $250,000 on a lot?
None.
Well, then I don't think we have to, we have to make a motion?
Yeah, we do, probably should.
Okay. So the motion would be to-
The what, right of first?
There you go, waive the right of first, thank you very much. So why don't you make that motion?
I just did.
I will second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, so now do we have to wait on the next one?
We don't have to wait for the public hearing until it's 6:30.
The pines.
Oh, I'm sorry, the pines. No, we can move forward with the pines.
Okay, so- Does he, do you know if he said he's coming?
He said he would be here. I told him he started at 6:00.
I'll give him five minutes. Anything else we can go through here? Let's see.
Yes, we have plenty.
I love the town meeting warrant article.
Do you use this thing? Or?
There you are. So we are now continuing the public hearing for the acceptance of roads at Sylvia Way. And Carrie, could you read the motion that we made from the minutes, please?
So the motion, Thomas Pires' motion and Robert Bonner's seconded to recommend to approve the acceptance of Sylvia Way as a town way as so long as the cracks in the road are fixed and the punch list is complete by the next meeting. Three ayes and two abstain.
Okay. And I believe that the town highway superintendent was going to join Peter from GZA to go over that with the applicant, correct?
Yes, it's two, let's see. GZA had requested that, let's see. Formed a site visit to the plans and prepared a punch list, which was delivered on September 7th by email of the punch list.
Okay. All right, I'm looking at it. So we have an email from September 19th. It says in short, "From GZA, as of the time of this," I'll paraphrase, I won't read the rest of it. "As of the time of this email, we've not received confirmation that any of the work has been completed nor have we received any of the additional requested information." So-
This is the list of what GZA?
Yeah, we have that.
Yeah, we have one.
Well, the reason why I'm giving you this is because it has the-
Oh, okay.
Items that are, were not completed. If you don't mind, I'll give you that when I'm done. We did have a meeting with Tom Ferry and Peter Williams and a couple of the presidents. We did go over the whole list. And the only item that was of difficulty scheduling was the number three, oh, I'm sorry, number four, which they wanted the, we assumed different things about what they wanted. They explained it to Tom and Peter explained it exactly to us how they wanted it, which necessitated jackhammering a small, a piece of the sidewalk, which we had difficulty scheduling by today. And everything else is really a function of it, of that same task. Like one of them is just throwing grass seed on a grass strip, which would not have grown anyways if they wanted us to wait. And that's it. Those are the outstanding items of the whole list. I would suggest to you that this whole, you know, the four outstanding items will cost about $4,000 to do. We have, there's $38,000 being held with zoning board of appeals, which by the way, and we sent an email this afternoon to you and I don't know if you used it, saying that the whole thing will be completed and we can schedule that inspection by October 5th. The road contractor that we've hired was, we were only able to schedule it before October 5th.
Carrie, what's the deadline for submission to the, for the town warrant?
Today.
That's why it was supposed to be done by today.
Right. I understand. We simply could not schedule this. Everything else is done except that one item there.
At the last meeting, you seemed pretty sure that everything was gonna get done.
I did. The thing is, the way that Tom Ferry and Peter Williams wanted us to repair that one piece was, I mean, a new item to us, which necessitated road contracts to do, not my own, my employees to do. So that's why the failure happened.
When's the town meeting?
It is, it is not-
But even so, the, the articles are required because they put it in the paper. And the zoning requirements that are needed. So that's why they had made the due date today, actually at noon time, and put a place holder in for our warrant article, should you guys move forward on that. And I believe-
May I say something?
Sure.
It is not unusual. We have a road in the town of Pembroke that was, that's totally accepted by the town now, that does have two minor items like that that we took care of after it was accepted. But they held a bond to make sure that we do it. These are really minor items. I wish Peter Williams was here to confirm what I'm saying, but-
Well, had they been completed before today, he would be here.
Right. I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around the, why you wanna push this so quickly? You pushing very hard for this. Now, a time is, you know, when the job is complete, that'd be a different story. But I still think it's a mistake for this board to go forward with this and set a precedence. Because once we do, we are opening the floodgates to every other homeowners association and every other builder and developer that comes to the town of Dayton. I don't really care what happens in the town of Pembroke, but I do care what happens in the town of Dayton. And I'm gonna stress again, like I stressed at the last meeting, public safety is my biggest issue with this. The narrow roads and the little swath in between the sidewalks. To me, that is detrimental. Okay, and I'm sorry that this got as far along as it has. It's all I have.
Any other board comments? Comments from the public, please state your name, address, and speak, sir.
My name's Brian Crosby, I live on Sylvia Way. I have a question, referring to you saying public safety is a concern. And I understand what you said last week about people walking down to the bus stop. And then you guys explained to me last week that every other road that's narrow and has no sidewalk, the bus stops at every point. Am I to understand that due to public safety, when the summer, I mean, when the winter rolls around, that the bus will be coming up Sylvia Way and stopping at every house? Not avoiding that at a bus stop, or?
I wouldn't be able to answer that question, sir.
So public safety is only a concern?
Public safety is, I was hit on a bicycle when I was a child, okay?
Okay.
So I don't know if anyone else's child has been hit on a bicycle, but it hurts, okay?
But my question is, public safety is only a concern for Dayton residents when it's a public road, correct? Because kids will be walking down this bus stop regardless.
No, no, no. We're concerned about public safety on every street and road in this entire town, in every child and human being.
Therefore, my question is, what difference does it make, accepting the road or not? Because kids will still be walking down that bus stop, regardless if it's a public road or not.
It will not be the town of Dayton road.
Regardless, so Dayton residents are put in the same jeopardy, regardless of the fact that it's a Dayton road or not? So-
If this road was built to the specifications as our subdivision bylaws state, we wouldn't be talking about this.
I understand that. But what I'm saying is, regardless of whether it's accepted or not, people are placed in the same jeopardy. Dayton residents are placed in the same jeopardy. That's my only point.
Sir?
My name's Mark Langley, 19 Sylvia Way. I understand your concern about public safety, but I think the parents and the residents of the pines, I had a signature, I went to every house in the pines and everyone signed off wanting the town to accept this road as a public way. And I think the parents of the children in the pines care about the safety of their children too and wouldn't be asking you guys to do that if they thought in fact their children were gonna be at risk if you guys had accepted our road as a public road. And I think the parents know best, they're not gonna put their children at risk. So they feel it's very safe.
Well, you know, sir, the children grow up and they go, people come and go. You know, all those people living there now ain't gonna be living there in 10 years from now. It's gonna be new people. So we have to look out for them too.
Sir?
Steve Shaw, 42 Sylvia Way. I can understand some of the concern about all of this, but I think it's turned a little bit towards us not caring. We're a very caring community. We're a group of people, I'm a grandfather. I have kids that come and visit me. I have concerns about people driving on that road. Trust me, I have more concerns about them driving down Pine Street than I do in my neighborhood. But to me, to me, it's not a big issue as far as we don't care about our children. We do care about our children. We, everybody in that neighborhood, I don't care whether, I'm 71 years old. We got people in there that are 30 years old. I mean, it doesn't make a difference. We're the people that have to be responsible. Not this, not Dayton, not anybody else. Everybody has to look out for where they live because it's where they live. It's what, it's what we're all about. It's, we're about people. We're about being individuals that care and truly, truly do care. I get so upset when I see UPS and FedEx and all the rest of them speeding around and I'm gonna out in the street and go, yo, man, slow it down. We got kids in this neighborhood. Who does that? Cop ain't there every day. We are. I'm retired, so trust me, I'm there every day. And when I see somebody doing something wrong, I'm not afraid to stand out in the street and go, yo, slow it down. Enough is enough. But, you know, you don't give us enough credit for what we are. We're a group of people who live in a neighborhood that have children. And all of us, I don't care who you are. My children come first, number one. That's all I have to say.
Ma'am?
Jessica, 25 Sylvia Way. And pardon my ignorance, I guess this is kind of a question, but who originally approved our development? Is it you guys or is it a different-
That was the zoning board of appeals under a Chapter 40B sub, approval for affordable housing.
But you guys probably-
We had nothing to do with that.
My question is-
Our role is none.
All right, then, my question is void.
So what are the differences between them and your approval for the same road in the same town?
If it had come before us, it would have to be a standard subdivision plan, which has different requirements, wider roads, sidewalks, et cetera. Because it was a, before the zoning board of appeals as a Chapter 40B approval process, some of those requirements are waived in the interest of providing affordable housing per Mass General Law, Chapter 40B.
And it was stated that it would, this would forever be a private road. That's the way the whole thing was approved, was based on that. And after everything is said and done, now that's when we're hit with this and I am the one against it.
Wasn't there an addendum to that? Wasn't the verbiage changed? Right, so that wasn't, that's not correct.
I'm sorry?
There was an addendum to that document.
The permit was modified to allow for acceptance as a public road. Initially, it was not.
Clarify.
Sir?
Craig Clooney, 44 Sylvia Way. I see a lot of, excuse me, I see a lot, I hear a lot about wider roads. That road is wider than the main street that I go down. It's wider than Milk Street. It's wider than most of the streets in this town. I don't see where width is an issue. And the sidewalk is perfectly maneuverable. I can even maneuver when I go. And I can walk through it all.
Sir, pretty soon that whole sidewalk's gonna be covered with snow. Okay, the road is, the road is narrow.
And people shovel snow.
No, they can't, sir.
They can't shovel snow? I can!
Okay, good.
Why can't we shovel snow?
Hold on, hold on, one at a time, please, one at a time.
I don't understand why we can't shovel snow.
No, you can, I'm not gonna stop you, believe me, but-
Well, then you do.
I don't think every house is gonna shovel with snow.
But that's under the law. If people have a sidewalk in front of their house, aren't they required, as of 2010, Mass General Laws, I think they changed it where people are required to shovel the sidewalk.
State law?
State law.
That's news to me.
Because that's when I lived in Ritzwater, under the, under the ADA requirements of March 15, 2012, every single resident and every business is required to shovel in front of their houses.
I thought that was town by town. Well, that's, that's good news, that's good to hear.
Nobody forces that, sir.
So safety is not an issue?
Don't tell me she's not wide enough.
We're gonna have to shut this one down.
Safety is not an issue.
That's all right, we can go, ladies. Ladies? Ma'am?
Yes, 18 Sylvia Way. So safety is not an issue. We are required by law to shovel our snow. We will shovel the snow in front of our sidewalks. And we have sidewalks. Pine Street does not have a sidewalk. I walk my dogs with my husband down Pine Street. I don't feel as safe as I do on Sylvia Way. Absolutely not. Absolutely not. I have a sidewalk to walk my dog. I know that my neighbors are gonna shovel their snow. By law, they have to. So we need to take safety off the table then. Because safety is not an issue.
Safety is a major issue.
Okay, then Pine Street, safety is an issue.
Let's put a road with sidewalks on the other streets that'll lead up to our place. And it'll dominate or whatever.
This is a way to stall what we're asking for. I'm sorry, that's all.
Sir?
Can I, can I just ask you, as a point of order, the motion itself was to have the punch list done in order to go, for this to go on the warrant, all right? Is it possible, because it's kinda getting sidetracked at this point, can this still be approved to go on the warrant? Let me finish my thought. Pending this work being done, if it's not done, when it comes up for a vote at the town meeting, then people are gonna say they haven't met the requirements of the warrant. That's still gonna happen and it's gonna be, they haven't met it. The planning committee approved it based on the assumption that the work was promised to be done. It wasn't done, so therefore the residents have the right at that point to vote up or down. That gives the developer an extra three weeks after the 5th, for that matter, if you wanna be technical, to see that the work is done. But at least that way, it gets it out of this committee, it gets it on the warrant instead of waiting for another meeting. And then it's up to the residents of the town to approve it. And at that point, the argument can be made either the work was completed and compliant or the work wasn't completed and wasn't compliant. Why can't you do that?
I believe that the, the board voted to recommend that the warrant be put on the warrant.
It gotta be put on the warrant assuming that work was completed and the punch list was done.
Yes.
So my question is, so I'm extending that and saying, can you put it on the warrant?
I believe that at this point, the proper motion would be for someone to motion to rescind the recommendation, which we have already made. Now, when I came into this meeting, I expected and believed that it was proper to rescind, to make that motion and that I would vote for it. But I don't believe, me personally, I don't believe that it's fair to all of you because some cracks didn't get sealed. And I believe that if it is on the warrant and if the items aren't completed by the time of the town meeting, I will be at the town meeting and I will explain why the town should deny it.
And I guess that's, I'm in agreement with you on that, so I'm asking you-
So I don't know that we have to make a motion, but this is an open, anyone on this board can make a motion to rescind or to maintain the recommendation. Sir?
You don't, I mean, you don't take any comfort or give any credit to the fact that there is a bond that's, that's five times-
And the zoning board has, has rec, has voted to allow a public way. If we, this board says, we need the money to do such and such, we have no control over that money. The zoning board of appeals does. Now, it's not a power struggle by any means, we, we're collegial in the way we work together, but...
If anything is at jeopardy, jeopardy, it's the road which belongs to the town. If, if, assuming that it didn't get happened by the time it got accepted. But if that doesn't, I mean, Tom Ferry would love to take that money and, and, and just do those things and keep the rest of it, you know, to, for other work, of course, in other places in town. So all I'm saying is that the work is, will definitely be done, but if it wasn't for any reason, there is more than enough to cover, whether it's under, you know, the purview or jurisdiction of the planning board or the work board or, or the DPA, it's, it's, it's there. And frankly, that is huge motivation. I just want to make another point clear, that it is really not fair for these, if you don't, don't vote to get it accepted, it's not, you're not penalizing me because they're going to be paying for maintaining it, you're penalizing them. And it's really, in my view, unfair to them due to, not their fault, due to my fault and the fault of scheduling to penalize them. But, you know, you're, it's your call.
Carrie, could you read that motion again? I want to make sure I understand it properly, the motion that was made last time regarding this.
Thomas Pires' motion and Robert Honner's second to recommend to approve the acceptance of Sylvia's Way as a town way so long as the cracks in the road are fixed and punch list is complete by the next meeting.
So, since the punch list is not complete, then someone...
I'd like to make a motion to rescind the decision of our last meeting.
And I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
No.
We can still, here's my take, I don't think, first off, we set the precedent, which is fine, I was willing to take my, I was the one that made the motion last time to accept it. So, now we have a situation where we voted that it will be complete by this meeting and it's not. So now we have two strikes, I think that could come back on us. I understand there's a petition and it's already a placeholder on the warrant. We have until the special town, I mean, the annual town, special town meeting it's going to be, to make a recommendation. Now, as soon as we find, this is my thought on this, that everything is complete, we can make the recommendation to approve or not approve. That's how I was looking at this, so...
So there's already a petition?
I'm going to tell you how I'm looking at it and I don't want the residents to think that I'm signaling you out, but I would feel much better if it was brought on by petition and the townspeople voted it in, rather than us making the decision and opening the floodgates for other developers, because that's exactly what we're doing, if we approve this. Now, if the, the residents decide to do it by petition and it goes to town meeting and the town people like it, fine, then every other developer has to come and fight for themselves. And that's the way I like to see it.
When is the next town meeting, the special town meeting?
The special town meeting is scheduled for October 15. And just to be proactive, I had spoken to the town administrator, asking her that in light, in case this didn't, this did happen, I asked her if, if the planning board does not recommend, does this mean that the resident petition cannot make the warrant? And she said they can, the warrant closing date is for the selectmen to place the articles on the warrant. A petitioned article goes on regardless of how the selectmen or any board feels. So I would suggest that the petition that I believe you had take, you had gotten together, you submit that to, I'm not sure if it's the town clerk?
We need to start over.
You need to start over?
It needs to be on the town form and it needs to have the wording of the article line. All we have right now is signatures, it's not valid.
Well, that you'll have to take up with the selectmen's office or the town administrator as far as that process. However, to be proactive, I wanted to make sure, knowing that you had the petition together and ready to correct, or you had the signatures for the petition.
Right, made signatures.
I asked her if it would still be available for you guys to get onto the warrant. She said yes. Now, as far as any other information that's needed, I would suggest you go to her and talk to them as far as that process. That would be up to that office.
Do you, do you know the deadline that we would have for that, the, or any chance I'm going to talk to, so selectmen's first?
I would say either selectmen or the town administrator.
But there is a placeholder for this to be on the warrant.
Yes.
Our placeholder, we don't rescind that by any means, but you need to follow up the process through the selectmen's office.
So just to be clear, this is not, the placeholder is not lost?
No, it's not, no.
As of tonight, or?
No.
But it's up to us.
But it's up to the residents.
To follow through and to make sure it remains a placeholder by talking to the selectmen.
So you're asking, you're asking, this, this, this committee is asking the residents to attain a petition?
We are not asking anything, we are suggesting that if you want it on the warrant, this is the process.
And how many petitions require, how many signatures require to get it on the warrant?
I believe you have that information already, sir. At the last meeting, you said you have those signatures and ready to go.
Yes. I had, I had a very informal petition, it was just a list of signatures, I have over 130 signatures just from doing the two developments.
So the numbers of signatures, that would be determined by the town court?
Okay.
As to how many that is?
In the back?
Hi, my name's Mia Harrell, I live at 2651 Pleasant Street. I'm not from Sylvia Way, I don't know anybody from Sylvia Way. I'm actually part of Dyton Rock Park, I'm not sure if anyone cares familiar with that. Those are private ways. I just think, I watched the last meeting online and I thought it was really crazy, one of the things you guys have to fight for. Dyton Rock Park as a private way is maintained and plowed by the town of Dyton. There is no HOA in Dyton Rock Park. We pay nothing, the town pays to plow our roads. So the fact that you guys have to pay an HOA fee and regular taxes to get something that we get at no additional cost, kind of blew my mind.
And now we have to put a bottom position too.
I just wanted to come and, and I don't know if anyone knows that, and at the start it was really odd that I have, at last meeting, I wasn't sure who the court member said it, but you guys got, you should be lucky to have, you guys have town trash. And I'm like, we all have town trash, and we don't have, have to have dumpsters or have to have a special company come pick up our trash. But I felt the way that I was said, that you guys should be grateful to have trash picked up. So it was just really interesting to see the difference. So I know Dyton Rock Park's been around forever and kind of, they are not becoming roads, they will never become roads, the roads are like, well, maybe. Our kids walk to get to the roads to get on the bus, but I just, I thought that it was really odd, I can understand why you guys are so frustrated with this and want to get some things that other private ways do get. So I just, I feel great, I understand where the board's coming from, they really do have to watch out for safety to make sure a fire truck hang it down and that everyone's safe, especially when you plow. Because when you plow, our roads get really little, like you can fit maybe one car, you know, so I, I understand where everyone's coming from, I just wanted to come tonight to let everyone know.
Mr. Chairman, just as a point of order, we have a public hearings, publicized and posted for 6:30 PM, and it's now 6:40.
One last comment, sir.
Okay, so Ed Paluch, 18 Silvia Way. So if we have to go out and get all these signatures ourself, put in this article ourself, I'm assuming that the planning board's going to go to the special town meeting and say that you don't support this, that's what you're saying by not putting this through? And then it's going to be put out to the townspeople that the town isn't supporting us being a public way?
Because we're not recommending it?
Right.
We...
Well, it, well, it sounds like some of the members are very against it becoming a public way, not, not only not recommending it.
We as a board, probably, I'm just using common sense, will have to tell the, the town meeting how we voted. And as a board, we'll have to tell them why. As a private citizen, the five of us can also speak up however we see fit, speaking for ourselves, not for the board.
Shouldn't we know individually right now how you feel?
We just voted.
I've heard from one person that you voted.
We voted.
You voted, you voted to rescind it.
We voted to rescind it. As I said during the process, when I came in here, I expected that I would vote to rescind it, but having seen the, the limited number of items on the punch list and not feeling that the neighborhood should suffer because of a, a shortcoming on the developer's part, I didn't think it was fair to devote, to vote against it. And as a matter of fact, I was the sole no.
You were.
And as the chairman, I will make my, the board's recommendations at the town meeting and as a citizen living on Pleasant Street, I will make my opinion known as well. And it will be the same as I just described, it will be no different. I'm not going to be recorded on video here and come up with something different, different there, because that's the way I feel.
You should move on, Mr. Chairman.
That being the case, the public hearing is closed. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a definitive subdivision plan at 281 Tremont Street, map nine, lot 33. So, here's the legal notice from the Town of Dyton Planning Board, in accordance with the provision of chapter 41, section 81T of the Mass General Laws, the planning board will hold a public hearing on September 19, 2018, at 6:30 PM at Town Hall Planning Board Office, 979 Somerset Avenue, Dyton, Mass, on the application of Benjamin Newberry for the approval of a residential definitive subdivision plan located at 281 Tremont Street, Dyton, Mass, being shown as assessed as map nine, lot 33, containing 2.2 acres of land. The applicant proposes a two-lot subdivision located in a residential agricultural district. All interested persons should attend the hearing. Copies of the plan are available for inspection in the planning board office. So, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record. My name is David Leggian, I'm attorney in Apple, Massachusetts. I'm happy to appear before the board tonight and I represent Benjamin Newberry, the applicant. With us tonight is Peter LaVoy, our civil engineer, with a few minutes of his presentation of what we're asking for. By way of background, in April of this year, I lead the board of appeals for the Town of Dyton, granted variances for, furnished, furnished variances for the two lots of 1840, a property consisting of a tract of land of over 90,000 square feet. Because of the zoning board actions, we're able to, here before this board, and divide it into two lots, one of approximately 39,000 square feet, the other of approximately 54,000 square feet. One of the lots will have a frontage of approximately 132 feet on Old Somerset Avenue, with the other 137 feet on Tremont Street. We ask for the variances because the bylaw in town, so this bylaw, as you well know, requires 175 feet of frontage, which is served the water. Proposed for the subdivision is what we do. We're in front of you requesting the frontage waivers so that they be in accordance with the variances granted by the zoning board of appeals to wit 132 feet of frontage on Old Somerset and 137 feet of frontage on Tremont Street. We're also asking, as part of the application, that the requirement for a development impact statement be waived because of the small nature of the subdivision. It's one large lot that existed, we're just proposing two lots without any roadway. It's important for you to note that the zoning board of appeals decision came with two conditions. One, that the resulting water and sewer lines for both one and two must be separate from each other, which we're prepared to do. Second, that prior to the issuance of a building permit, a drainage plan must be submitted to the building inspector showing existing and proposed runoff calculations so as to ensure the drainage is not increasing to any abutting property or the public way. We would assume that that's one of the things this board would look at and come within the board's purview. Peter's prepared to address that, so unless you have any questions in my brief presentation, I'd like to have Peter take you through the site plan.
My name is Peter LaVoy, I'm a project engineer for this project. So just to give everyone familiar, Old Somerset Ave runs along the side of the page right here and Tremont Street runs along the bottom of the page. So the existing parcel is like a T shape. If you look, it comes up, around, down, and that's the existing lot, it's a T. So the existing frontage, like Dave said, on Old Somerset is 132 feet on this road and 137 on this road. Basically, that's all the frontage it has on those two, those two roads. Basically, the overall parcel is roughly 2.2 acres. We do have an existing house in the middle, right here. Existing sewer comes out like this and ties into a sewer on Somerset Ave. The existing water comes out like this and ties into Tremont Street. It's basically, it's mainly a lawn area, except there's basically large trees in this location right here. But like I said, you have a curb cut on Somerset, this is an existing driveway that comes down, there's an existing curb cut here, and then you come down and there's an existing curb cut on that street. So they have access to both streets.
Where's the home going to be located on that lot?
On this lot right here. It's right here.
Right there.
So, so basically what we're doing...
Right through the sewer line?
Oh, sewer line's gone.
Oh, sewer line's gone.
Yeah, sewer line has to be gone. So basically what we're doing is we're going to take that parcel, subdivide it into two pieces. Normally, it would just be an A and R, but we don't have the required frontage. So we basically have the existing house here, it's going to keep the existing driveway. A new sewer line is going to tie into the sewer on Tremont, that's part of the requirement from ZBA. The water line is going to stay and that's going to tie into Tremont, that's already there. Then the other lot right here, we're going to remove basically 1,700 feet of existing driveway that's going to be grass, so we're converting that into grass. Then we're going to use the existing curb cut, put in a new driveway which is shorter, and then put in a, a new house in this location here. The impervious area does go up a little, it goes up to 2,100 square feet from pre to post because this portion of the driveway basically cancels out the driveway and it's just the house right there that is going to be impervious. But the rest of it's all going to be lawn. So you have a new sewer line going out to Old Somerset and a new water service for the new house going out to Old Somerset. So like I said, the driveway is going to be the same and basically this house is, is kind of lower than the road, so we are going to raise it a little bit, but we're going to cut in a swale in the back to catch any of this water coming down this way where it used to go. And it's going to be directed down and there's like a low spot in this area here, kind of it's going to create like a little, if the water's going to stay on the, above the ground, it will stay there for a little bit and then infiltrate into the ground because the type of soil in this area is obese, obese soil, so it's, it's, was it, it drains, it drains well, so that's what, that's what we're going to do. So, so what we're going to do is we're going to collect the runoff and direct it into this low area here so it infiltrates. We have a swale in the backyard to collect any runoff coming down because the topography does slope towards Old Somerset Ave, but Old Somerset Ave is higher than, than this parcel here. Basically, in the existing conditions, all this runoff was probably running down that driveway right into the street and now you're going to have a shorter section of driveway and you're creating this swale to collect any runoff this way. So that driveway is going to basically be removed and it's going to, it's going to kind of direct it towards this way where the swale is and away from the, the house on the corner of the street. So that's basically, that's basically everything.
How far is the next house from, from that property line?
From this property line? I know this house is quite a distance away from the property, I don't have, I don't have the distance, but right now, the house from here to the deck is roughly 35 feet, so, and then I know there's, I don't think there's a house probably within, I want to say, maybe 80 feet to the side of the property line. This is a large lot, from what I remember, I'm just trying to remember.
That's your house, sir? They're talking about, I know where you live. You find any water over there? You find any water over there?
Um, not really. It does sort of cool up around here, but it doesn't last long.
Right.
Yeah, the soil is very, I mean, I look at the surface, it's very good.
I just, I seen you.
Oh, yeah.
My godfather lives across the street from you. Larry, my godfather.
All right. I know my guy.
That's basically my presentation. If you have questions, I'll answer.
Have we had peer review?
Peer review.
Uh, GZA?
I did send it to them, but I haven't heard back.
Okay. I just, my only concern would be to make sure that what you're saying about your stormwater management plan is workable, and the best way to do that is to have someone else look at it, and that's our, our engineering consultant.
Okay.
So.
I will email him again tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
I'll get that as soon as possible, and then any comments that you can hand, send it to you.
Carrie, you gave us a lot of papers to go with this.
Yes.
I assume this is the background that allows for the less than 175 feet frontage?
Correct. So, all this is the background of typically something like this, an applicant would submit a Form A, but as we discussed in our presentation, because the frontage doesn't meet the requirement under the Form A, so you don't have enough frontage, 175 feet, even though ZBA approved it, the planning board themselves cannot approve it as a Form A because it doesn't have that minimum requirement.
But just as we can approve a Form A that's not buildable, we can approve a lot line. Our approval doesn't really convey buildability. It's the ZBA's variance that conveys that.
That's correct.
Any other questions from the board?
Just a housekeeping issue, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
When this is submitted to your peer reviewer, would you permit Mr. Lavoy to speak directly with that peer?
Absolutely.
What you require to go through?
No, we require they speak to each other.
That's great, because some boards don't allow us to have.
No, no, no. We don't want to get in the way of technology.
Yeah, absolutely.
And expertise.
Correct.
And our lack thereof.
Absolutely. I'll line up for that.
Any questions or comments from the public? Please state your name and address, please.
Brenda Quebec, 519 Tremont Street. Although he had an interest in the property on the corner, is there a culvert under the road where the water will collect on the outside?
I think they're-
A few years ago, there was.
They, they show, they do show that, yes.
Water will go to, where they sit down. We just want to make sure the water does go that way and not for the carhouse.
Right, no.
Is that our issue?
No, I did take that, that was part of the recommendation when I, when we got the variance, and I did take that into account.
As we just made first point of clarification, in the ZBA's, um, forgive me, in their findings and decisions, in one of the, um, conditions, at the very end, it says that prior to the issuance of any building permit, the drainage plan must be submitted so that, showing that the existing proposed calculation is not increasing the runoff on that corner property. That wasn't concerned, so they did address that.
And that's what we're asking this board to do, ma'am, in their period review process.
I mean, honestly, I don't see how the water would, from this, from this development here, this is, this site is lower than this site, plus the driveway here that goes through kind of creates like a, a bump, like a berm. So, the only runoff that this lot would get would be from the front yard of the existing house, and we're not doing anything over there except digging a trench and putting it back to the same elevation. We're not changing that at all. This is downgrading.
Other questions, concerns?
So, it's not going to run down into my property either, right?
No, it's going to, it's going to come right down here into the corner, oh, yeah, but it's going to infiltrate into the ground before it even gets there because of the type of material that's there.
So, your calculations don't require a drywell or anything like that?
Hmm, I mean, I, I, no, it didn't. But I mean, if, if a drywell, if, if the, if a drywell would make the board happy, I don't have a problem.
I think we'll just let our-
We'll wait until, if, if GZA comes up with that comment, I don't have a problem putting some, and I would put the, I would put the recharge on this side because this, this side is going to be filled up.
Right.
So, I'll just put it on that side. Can I keep it away from that, that corner?
All right. Other questions? I think based on our lack of a peer review, that the proper course of action is a continuance.
That would be acceptable to us, Mr. Chairman. Do you have a suggested date?
Uh, probably next meeting?
Next meeting, which would be October 3rd, so two weeks, two weeks from today.
If that gives, that's fine.
So, would anyone like to make that motion?
I have one question.
Sure.
When do you need the, like, say GZA comes back and they get, hopefully they get in touch with me, when do you need the revised, or can I just send it to them? And if they're, if they get, to give the okay before the next meeting, then?
That's exactly right. Send it directly to them, copy to us.
Okay.
If I may ask Madam Clerk to just send me the contact information for GZA so I can forward that to Mr. Lavoy.
I'll make a motion to continue this meeting.
Judge.
On paper?
Aye.
Thank you for hospitality, folks.
Your name.
Okay. I'm emailing her at six, but I'll confirm it.
Just looking at what they-
Okay, the next item is the zoning reg, oh, wait, is, uh, Mr. President, okay. So, the next is discuss the zoning regulations, recommendation for the open space plan with the open space committee. Step right up, please. Here, I thought you were here for another reason.
I am. We are.
I'm sure she is.
So, my name's Ellen Villa, and I'm the chairperson of the open space committee, and this is Jessica Philly, and she's our secretary, and we emailed you guys a little while ago a bunch of questions for our open space plan, and is it okay to sit down?
Please do.
Okay. Yeah, so we're developing, you know, a new open space plan, and we would like very much to be sure that we're addressing any needs that you guys may have, that, you know, so that we're coordinating with all the different boards and everything with our goals, and then also to identify areas maybe where zoning bylaws or other improvements could be made to aid in conservation efforts and resource protection efforts. So, we emailed you guys, um, a bunch of questions. I don't know if, um, it's a pretty long list. I don't know if you guys have had a chance to review the list, or?
I remember getting it, to be honest.
Yeah, me either.
Okay. It should be in your packet. I thought, I thought, um, Carrie told me she's.
Yeah, it is there. Looks like this.
Okay. It's like this.
So, you guys, um?
This? Nope.
You go.
One, yeah, just one page. I'm honest.
Nope.
I have an extra one.
I need it. Oh, there we go.
Okay.
Very envy.
Oh, so wait, but wait, there's more.
Yeah.
Decision?
I have it next to us.
Nope.
Here, you can have mine.
I have an extra.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, um, I don't know, given, you guys haven't really seen it yet, do you, um, should we come back to you maybe?
We need to contemplate some of our answers.
I don't want, I don't want to, like, catch you guys flat footed or anything like that. I wouldn't want to.
We're a nimble group.
Okay.
So, you want us to just go over the questions?
Yeah, we'll just go over the questions.
Question one, do you allow open space residential design by, right, or by special permit?
Mm-hmm.
Now, we have the conservation subdivision bylaw, which is by special permit, where a developer could come, let's say they've got 50 acres, and 50 acres allows for 75 lots, by, right?
Uh-huh.
In a conservation subdivision, they can make smaller lots, and we waive some of the requirements, and as a result, a certain amount of open space is, uh, is created, and there are several of those conservation subdivisions in existence now, and if you'd like to see some of them, come by the office and Carrie can show you them and all of the open space that have been created.
Uh-huh. Yeah. Yeah, we have a bunch, yeah, we have more questions about that further down.
They may only have PDFs.
Uh-huh, yeah. Yeah, we're curious about how successful that, how successful that bylaw was being.
Well, on the one hand, it gives us some flexibility in terms of creating open space. On the other hand, there are some developers who want to take advantage of that and insist that they can take a, a lot filled with wetlands and cut it up into 50 lots, 30 of which are unbuildable, but they think they can still get 50 lots out of it.
Right.
50 conservation lots.
I see what you're saying.
Because those conservation lots may be on all the uplands, so, but there are, there are, uh, regulations that preclude it, but there is some gray area where developers want to stretch that as much as possible.
Mm-hmm, right. They want to make as much.
Yeah, Wellington Acres is a good one. In fact, they, they were approved of 54.
Uh-huh.
I think it might have been 52, 54, and because of the cost to develop it, Wellington Acres, they decided to go down to 28 lots.
Ah, okay.
And that was good for the town, and it was good for them.
Yeah.
We had to make some, make some, waive some of the subdivision requirements to make it doable for them, but it was in the town's interest to have, have half as many buildable lots and twice as much open space.
Yeah, uh-huh, right. I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't catch the name of that development?
Wellington Acres.
Wellington, you haven't done?
Yep.
Okay. Great, thank you.
That kind of goes along with number two.
Yeah.
And we, you know, the, the conservation bylaw encourages that low-impact development.
Mm-hmm. And then, um, I guess I'll give you the questions, you have the microphone.
And, well, the next one, have you updated your design storm standards to reflect the changes in precipitation over the past 50 years? Well, 50 years ago, I don't think there were any standards.
There were.
There were, in the town.
He would know.
Yeah, this is Bill Napolitano. He's helping, and he's from certain-
He's our helper.
He's, he's helping us right now.
Recently awarded the man of the year or something like that.
Yeah.
I saw you in the newspaper.
Yep.
And what was that word for, Bill? Could you please tell us?
EPA Lifetime Achievement Award.
There you go. I guess.
Your name again?
Bill Napolitano. I've been working with the town for years.
Okay. And so the town did have stormwater management plan from 50 years ago?
Well, um, provisions for stormwater drainage that were pretty uniform, even on state highways, things like that, but, um, they were done by two old, old NICF standards. Mostly, uh, storm drainage was inadequate for what you have now, and I think what the committee was referring to is I brought in some, um, stormwater, uh, standards done by Cornell, the Cornell standards, and NOAA standards, NOAA 14 standards, which are very recent, which show, um, the inadequacy of most storm drainage right now, affecting this, in this particular basin. We're anywhere between 0.9 inches and 1.2 inches below the standard we should as far as handling storm flows. So, what the committee was getting at was, have you made any provisions, or you guys kind of kicked around the idea of upgrading standards for new developments to be able to handle stormwater adequately, or do they still?
It sounds like we should.
Yeah. Could you help us with that?
Actually, we have, we have, we have a recommendation. I can give you, in fact, I can give you a nice handout that shows the comparison as far as what the prevailing standards were that were established many years ago, you know, sometimes four and a half, five decades ago, and what the newer standards were prescribed. You know, not everybody has them, obviously. If things work, you know, they, you just keep a standard, it's not the thing you'd normally look at, but now with more frequent storm, and like the storms we get now, you notice, we get a lot of moisture dumped in a very short period of time, you have these intense dumps of water, and your subdivisions and your roads still have to handle it, and a lot of these roads were rural roads, even when they were considered major highways, but now you have a lot of development occurring along those roads, so you've created a lot of impervious surface, you know, not as a deliberate act, but you still have a lot of old culverts, and Tom Ferry would probably attest to this, that are undersized, inadequate. Some of them are old mortar and fieldstone culverts, they started to fall apart, you know, they erode. So, you're looking at things like that as far as designing, and what that will do is actually improve water, if you, if you increase your standards for to handle the design flows, you'll be looking at improving water quality, better stream flow, better fishing wildlife passage. You have some cold water streams, state certified cold water streams here in Dayton, too, that you'd be looking at for fish passage. And the thing is now, as of 2014, those cold water streams are regulated as outstanding resource waters in the Commonwealth. The fish, the cold water streams-
Sounds like it.
Yeah.
We have two areas in town.
Oh, you do, and, and actually, Tom's working on one right now down, he's gonna, he's just got a grant, you guys got a grant, congratulations, for Briggs Road to do, um, background study and engineering design permitting to replace the culvert system down there. It's an unnamed tributary to the Segregated, but it's a state certified cold water stream. In fact, the Segregated is, too. So, lots of things going on in town.
Tell you, um, what we will do, what I will do, and we have a recently formed storm water.
I was working on Nancy's lot.
And Nancy is on it, I'm on it, Tom Ferry is on it, building commissioner. I will present this, uh, we have a meeting on, I think the next one is 27th, uh, as an item of discussion, and would you be receptive to coming down to the stormwater meeting if we needed to?
Yeah, if I'm available, I'd be more than happy to come, and I can give you some stuff.
Yeah, let me make a presentation of this to our stormwater committee.
Sure.
And, um, we'll go from there with this.
Great, great.
The next question is, do you encourage reduction in the length and width of roads? Maybe. Absolutely. The conservation subdivision, uh, bylaws encourage the reduction in the length, but we don't encourage the reduction in the width because of safety reasons.
For the fire trucks and that kind of thing, is that what you mean?
But-
You need room for the snow.
Perhaps our stormwater management plan is inadequate for those wide roads based on the extra rain that we're talking about.
Mm-hmm.
Also, too, I'm not sure, if you don't mind.
No, please go ahead.
In a regular conventional subdivision, uh, we've had people prior to this board sitting, uh, we, in our bylaws, we have a maximum of 600 feet on a dead-end street. As of lately, we are not encouraging longer than 600 feet because that equals more development. So, we're trying to stick with the 600 feet unless it benefits the town somehow or another.
Number five, have you addressed any of the planning board's specific recommendations made in the recent master plan, such as conduct a review and comprehensive update of the zoning bylaw? No, we have not recently. Zoning incentives to encourage the reinvestment in and redevelopment of existing properties, particularly those that are vacant or underutilized? I don't know that we've done anything along those lines. I know that there are quite a few mills that could be redeveloped in ways that would probably increase the population of the town, which isn't something that a lot of people want to encourage. On the other hand, if we could get those mills redeveloped and put something in them that, that would develop revenue, like, I don't know, maybe some marijuana growing facility.
Brewery.
Brewery, yeah, yeah. Open space residential design is an update to any previous conservation subdivision provisions. I'm not aware of, of that.
Don't ask. Do you have anything to add to that? Incorporate open space residential design, which is an update?
Well, just, just the OSID, it's, it's kind of, kind of updates, you know, the older conservation subdivision designs, and we're just wondering if the planning board had looked at any of the more recent regulations and more recent-
We haven't, but we probably should. If you could-
All we really do is approve things, too.
Or not, but mostly approve.
And, you know, that's, that's something you could even take up with the stormwater committee. In fact, one of the things I can tell you, my group just got a grant from the Southern Illinois Estuaries Program through Restore America's Estuaries, and we will be working with the towns of Dayton, Berkeley, and Freetown to do a deep dive on their bylaws, to help dive on their bylaws to help them review their bylaws and see if we could potentially upgrade them, update them. And even the provisions before, we were talking about storm water management, things like that. So it's free technical assistance to the towns under the grant. I'll be working with the Nature Conservancy, Mass Audubon, and the Man of it Center for Conservation Sciences. And Mass Audubon, the Shaping the Future of Communities Program, has a tremendous model for doing the deep bylaw studies in communities. So we'll be working with your committees anyways coming up, probably start within the next couple of months. So anything you can think of, too, that you'd like to really take a look at, we'd be more than you have, what a game.
Any kind of rain gardens coming under this one, or?
Yeah, you'd be looking for storm water management types of facilities, yeah. Rain gardens, infiltration, with green infrastructure, too. Actually, working with what you have, the land that you have, the woodland that you have, the whole bit. There's some very valuable green infrastructure in this town that can incorporate into storm water, maybe conservation.
Do you want Bill to forward you these open space residential?
Yeah, please.
Okay.
Yes, Surphine's coming up with a nice model for a couple of communities, so just that way, yes, and just look at.
And do we encourage the maintenance of natural hydrology and the retention of water on site as part of site development requirements? Yes, we have the subdivision regulations in town require storm water to be maintained. Whether the developers do it properly is another question entirely. And whether the designs that they come up with work as planned is another question, as we know well.
Okay.
And again, same with number seven. We haven't really conducted any recent bylaws.
But I think your storm water committee is looking at those. Yeah, they're going to be looking at that.
Yeah, I'm doing a community contact, and I was working with Nancy before to come up with the scope of work for the state, she asked for some assistance. So all of this is covered under your scope of work, too, and we can apply that grant that we just got to this to help the storm water committee out to do that, that kind of bylaw, I doubt, too.
Yeah, okay. Tom, should we be meeting, should we plan a meeting between us and the storm water, the storm water committee as part of our?
Our trip around the boards?
Yeah. Trip around talks at different boards, okay. Maybe that's the thing that we should be doing.
I mean, I don't know how much you've established. Do you want us to wait for a couple of months till you get?
Yeah, I think we should, until we get some information.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll make a free presentation to the storm water committee. If we design yourself, I circle, this is what we're going to be looking at.
Okay, sure.
Any open space committee would like to come, and Bill would like to come.
Perfect.
I'm not sure if you'd like to come, but...
No, absolutely, that would be fine. I can even get back to the open space committee, too, for the sake of time, because the questions that we would ask are the things that probably work with the market.
Right, okay, that sounds like the plan.
So we have the liaison for...
That'd be awesome, thank you.
Okay, sure.
That'd be great. I think we're on to number eight.
Number eight. Does the town periodically inspect properties held in restrictions part of approved developments?
So we're thinking about, like, for example, those green, those, like, you have a green development, right, and a piece of land gets set aside, and there's like an easin or a concert. Do those lands get inspected to see that they are, in fact, being conserved in the way that was intended?
I don't know.
A lot of them are like homeless associations.
Okay.
So like, some of these new developments have open space areas, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
And they're controlled by the HOAs. They're really no concern to us, right?
I mean, they say that they're going to build walking paths and stuff like that, and I've gone and consulted them, that there are no walking paths, they're...
I mean, like, in the North Dayton Village, where I live, we have all those little parks that were created by Milliken back in the day, and the town does a very good job taking care of those. But the other ones, you know, that are in new developments with HOAs, they monitor them and take care of them and mow them. The town's not responsible. But like all the little parks in North Dayton, they're all taken care of by the highway department. They do a super good job.
I think what the committee was getting at, too, is that some of the, some things, HOAs will control some of it. You see the question down there, you know, private entities, all of them, and five of them. But where the town holds land, have you guys experienced encroachment or anything like that? Sometimes without last instruction, people who live next to these things, all of a sudden, where the property line goes up like this, in a road like this, and all shared up to the other people it was before.
Well, I use some of the town-owned land for recreation myself, like, called Nature Trail.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And the new one down here, Alpha 138, by Tony Roger Salsa, I don't know what the name of that was. But I was just there the other day.
Yeah.
Beautiful, nice maintained.
We talked about that today. I was out there with Bill for that the other day. We had caught in the tide change. We were out there, and the property was great.
Still have wild grapes.
Beautiful.
They were out of my reach.
But one of the things that sometimes experience when they hold, you know, a conservation restriction, they hold the property, they take it during in conservation subdivision or development, is that they'll go out years later and they'll see that sometimes the homeowners themselves have put in their, you know, split rattle fences, they kind of encroach onto the property that was supposed to be given to the town. I think that was the question.
They made that in North Dayton where the playground is, and actually, the town, I know this, but I don't think the homeowner knows, we actually own 10 feet behind that fence. And that's where the real property line is. So, and that was encroached on maybe 50 years ago.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't think anybody was watching that, except for me.
And now it's on tape, yeah.
Number nine. Do you look for partners to help you address land use related issues in town? Well, we have Surphine, Southeast Regional Planning and Economic Development, something or other.
District, yeah.
District.
Close enough to government.
I am the commissioner of, for the town of Dayton's Board of Selectment and the Planning Board. We meet monthly. They provide us with expertise and update us on regional issues.
Okay, so mainly Surphine.
Well, you know, I don't know if there's any representative in the town, from the town, official capacity, for like the Taunton Watership, what's it called?
Oh, the Wild and Sea Stewardship Council, yeah, actually, we have a very good representative on there, yeah.
Oh, we do, okay.
Right, he's been sick though, hasn't he? Mark?
Yeah, Mark, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
He's been great.
Yeah.
How much land has been preserved via the green development bylaw? That's a good question. Is there a list? Don't know. How often does this land remain in private hands?
What's your town homeowners association?
Yeah, exactly, versus like, so in your bylaw, there's several options for the conserved land. It can become town-owned land, it can remain in private hands, like part of the HOA, or it can get turned over to a conservation organization. So I was trying to get a sense of what's usually the fate of that land that's been set aside.
Yeah, I wonder if there would be better stewardship of that land if we changed the conservation bylaw so that the land was turned over to a nonprofit conservation organization? I mean, I don't know, I'm just spitballing here, but it would seem like if we had, rather than have homeowners hope that they maintain the walkway, if they could, if it could be owned by someone else, the Autoblock Society, or...
Right. Yeah, it sounds like the fate of the land that's being set aside in these conservation developments isn't necessarily monitored by the town, like, what's really happening on those parcels?
Unless, at one point, there was a, a developer wanted to do a conservation subdivision and add in a soccer field for the town as part of the open space, so that obviously would have been monitored by the town. But that's usually not the case. Usually, it's just fields that people can walk their dogs in or take hikes in.
Okay, okay.
And how often do developers take advantage of the bylaw? Not very. We had one conservation subdivision proposal before us some months ago. We had another preliminary not too long ago, and they, both of them had issues. They thought that they should get X number of lots based on a conventional subdivision, and so they should be promised that same number of lots in the conservation subdivision. But in both cases, there were setback issues and wetlands issues and vernal pools issues, and one of those projects, one of those parcels is now going to be a 40B development. The other one, I don't know what's going to happen to it. He may be, do a conventional subdivision. He may do a solar array, which we almost always approve those solar arrays, as much as people don't like them if their neighbors bought under the Dover Amendment. If they meet our requirements, we have to approve them.
Okay.
Now, let's see. New plantings are required of the native species.
Sure.
I don't think so. You know, people plant white pines, usually it's, for instance, to hide a solar array.
Yeah, yeah.
And so they plant white pines and other things that will scream rather than attract butterflies or birds, or...
Right. Yeah, no, I noticed, I think that came from, particularly from commercial developments, when you have a commercial, you're requiring, putting in a, there's a requirement there for planting specifically, and I did notice, I think the one where the Princess House, I think they put some native species in. I don't know if they're all native, but I did notice some, at least some of them were.
They did that on their own.
Okay.
We haven't had a commercial development site plan approval in how long? We've had some minor approvals. For instance, the truck option was a minor approval.
Uh huh.
We did not require trees and such, and in hindsight, having a row of trees along the road to hide those trucks probably would have been a good thing.
Right.
The chestnut trees over here that Conservation Commission put in, on the side, over there?
Yeah, there's quite a few of them around, yeah.
Yeah, it's chestnut.
Yeah, it is.
They're not native, though.
A bunch of them.
Couple of them.
There were a bunch of them planted, actually, behind my house.
The program for the Aggie School, didn't it?
You'll find genitalia right at the end.
The American Chestnut Society.
Yeah.
Right?
I was wondering, on your solar, it's probably ground-mounted solar, right?
Yes.
Do you guys require any type of pollinator field, a pollinator-type planting underneath them? Because a lot of times, they'll keep grass there, and if they're mowing, they paint it.
Grass.
One of the things that, because we're losing pollinator habitat, that I've recommended to some communities when we work with them, is to do pink and white clover, because it only grows so high. It's a three-season bloom. It attracts all kinds of pollinators, and then going out to the field where you try to hide, you know, obviously, you want higher plantings to hide the field, you can start doing things like high bush blueberry, you know, sweet pepper bush, and then go right into the woods. So you get birds, bees, and anything that likes to, you know, feed, breed, or whatever. It works out pretty nice, and it makes it a lot easier to maintain, because some people, you know, like I said, they'll do grass, or they'll leave, you know, they'll leave it kind of a shambles, or if they do come in and try to plant, you know, everything dies off. So I was just, I was just wondering if you guys had considered pollinator?
We haven't, but we certainly can.
Yeah, I like that idea.
Yeah.
And I think number 12, we've already talked about a lot of changes and updates that we probably should do. I don't know if we could require, I don't think that a single-family lot requires storm water management. Commercial developments, there's storm water management. But some towns do have storm water management on a single-family house, so that requires dry wells and recharge areas. Probably would go a long way towards managing the water that comes off of these. Like, for instance, I think we were talking a few meetings ago about subdivisions with water running off the roofs or coming out of the basements and being pumped onto the road and then freezing up and creating a real mess.
Yeah, there's a problem that way.
That's a lot of storm water management.
That's one of those things we're talking about now in the committee.
Uh huh, right.
So, yeah, there's probably a lot of things that need to be updated, and I think processes, we need to figure out what they are, then we need to vote on them, then we need to recommend them to the town meeting, and then they need to vote on them, and I think most people will see the benefits for many reasons.
Yeah.
And hopefully, they become part of our subdivision laws. And then the last one. Which zoning bylaws are currently the most helpful in promoting conservation? Well, certainly the conservation subdivision bylaw. On the one hand, the solar, the Dover Amendment that allows all these solar arrays is not really conservation, but it's also not, they usually are fairly, as far as storm water goes, they're neutral, they don't add to the storm water, whereas if you take an 80-acre piece of land and put solar panels on it, it's certainly not conserved, but it's more conserved than 100 houses.
Right.
So, you know, it's, and it's more beneficial to the town in many ways as well to have that solar array. And we do approve them all the time before this board because they come before the board all the time.
Mm-hmm.
It would be great if there were other things that had a positive impact on the town that weren't solar arrays and weren't controversial and created a nimbyism issue, but they are what they are.
I think one of the best things you guys did as a town, too, is you have Chapter 61 old that, so that you do have a land conservation fund with that. So, you know, a lot of towns don't do that, so you took an issue early on, just...
If you send this all down, it answers all that. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much for your time.
We got a lot of solo people coming to us.
Any supporting, any support, send it to us, it would be good, because I wanted to do it here.
Yeah, no, I agree, and if you happen to think of anything that you want to add, or anything that you think you would like to see, any recommendations that you specifically would like to see, we will be happy to talk about adding them, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. It was very nice meeting you guys.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations again, too, Bill.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, now H, One Connection Marijuana Presentation.
How you doing?
Great, how are you?
Good, good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. Thank you. Yep, absolutely. I tend to project pretty well. My name is Valerio Romano. I'm the attorney for One Connection Corp. And Tower Three, which are actually two businesses that are seeking to cite local cannabis businesses in the Commonwealth, or in Dayton. I've been in front of the Board of Selectment a few times. I met Mr. Woods at those meetings for One Connection. So specifically, you know, I heard a mention, maybe it was question four or five from the prior presentation, a mention of potentially expanding or using mills in the industrial zone for cultivation and product manufacturing of cannabis. And that's essentially what we're here for, for Tower Three. And then also, the second part of the zoning amendment that's proposed, that I believe is in your materials, would actually give this board discretion to issue variances or waivers from setback requirements related to the cannabis zoning bylaw. And that's specifically for One Connection, for the 200 William Street address, which I think was contemplated in the zoning, but ultimately requires a, but ultimately requires a variance from the zoning board of appeal, if, which I've informed by town council. So, again, my name's Valerio Romano. I'm an attorney with Vicente Cedarburg LLC. We are a national law firm that only does cannabis licensing and policy work. We actually, I'm a co-author of question four, which ended prohibition here in Mass. I live on the South Shore. I live in Citrus. I'm raising my kids here. I'm a Mass person, but we are a national firm. This is all we do. I know, I believe Ms. Ehrenstein supplied materials to the board, which essentially amend section 2900 of your bylaw. And they do two things. They expand cultivation and product manufacturing into your industrial district or industrial overlay district. And then, like I said, they give the planning board discretion to grant waivers and variances from the bylaw. If there's a location that you feel is appropriate, the board feels is appropriate, and you have a qualified applicant or actor to cite there, and 200 William Street is the address that jumps out at me that we're trying to cite in, we have, you know, we have a business that really wants to move forward at that location. That's One Connection, that's been in front of the Selectment and obtained their support for citing as well. So what I'm asking for is a recommendation that this be placed on special town meeting warrant, which I think needs to be done tonight, if it's going to happen at all. And so with that, I mean, that's really sort of the essence of my question, if there's, of my request, if there's any questions at the... If there's any questions that the board has, I'm happy to address them. Really, the two addresses we're thinking of, we didn't want to spot zone them. 200 Williams is already in your overlay. 620 Spring Street is the other address that we're currently, that Tower Three is currently contemplating citing in. Yeah, so if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Have you talked to Mr. Merrigan?
Have I spoken with Mr. Merrigan?
Yeah.
I don't believe I...
You have?
Sorry, yeah, so Anthony Kinnahan is here, he's from Tower Three.
Okay. I spoke with him a couple of weeks ago at the post office, I just happened to run into him. And he told me that there's a mortgage on that building. And that the bank advised him not to do anything regarding cannabis.
Yeah, he brought that up to me, and he said they may have to look for another bank for financing with, and, you know, we said to him, "We'll help with the finance costs if they need to do that." I guess they had something to look at that site a few years ago, and they looked at another bank. Because of the same issue you brought up. So they were aware of that, they have another bank they were looking at previously.
Through the chair, Mr. Woods. So this is something that our office has confronted with a number of other projects that we've done throughout the Commonwealth, and we've been able to secure alternate financing from some banks that may be a little more risk adverse or traditional, and we've been able to overcome this issue. So we expect to be able, assuming that we can do...
I'm not talking about your bank, I'm talking about the bank that owns...
Yes, we would move the mortgage to a new bank essentially, you've got a new lender from a new bank.
Their mortgage.
Yes, their mortgage. We would assist them in finding a new lender. And what we were just hearing is that my client would help cover the costs of refinancing the mortgage. So it's something that we want to work with the property owner on doing.
Like, I'm not against that location at all, I think it's a great location.
Yep.
And, you know, as long as they're good with it, I believe we'll be good with it.
Yeah, so it's, you know, it's one of the things that we, you know, we know that we have to cross. There's so many hurdles getting through this, but the mortgage hurdle is certainly one of them. But we've done it a few times now, and I'm confident that we can figure out a way around it.
Good.
So, these changes are changes that you have proposed to the town, which would be to us. As far as, and so, the changes are those that are underlined on these, these three pages.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so it's just changing, adding additional definition of marijuana cultivator. Adult use is not changed. Product manufacturer.
Which, Mr. Chairman, are the two uses that we're trying to allow to be acceptable in the industrial?
Oh, I'm all for it, don't get me wrong. I'm just making sure that everyone in the public knows what we're talking about. And then the buffer waivers or variances. And so, right now, the means for a variance to this bylaw is through the ZBA. So this changes that so that the variance would be, could, the granting authority would be the planning board.
And it expressly lays out the option of a variance. Right now, the only way we thought, we believed the zoning board would be able to give us the variance was because Town Council is the one that informed us of that. When I originally met with your zoning enforcement officer, we hadn't really come to that conclusion. It was only after Ms. Ehrenstein and I think maybe your zoning enforcement officer spoke to Town Council about it, we got the information back. So this would expressly give the power to a board, you know, to issue those as opposed to having it be something that, you know, is open to interpretation or further litigation or whatever in the future.
Did you say you spoke with the local advisory board, Cannabis Advisory Board?
They have been at all of our Board of Selectmen meetings, and they've come and sat, members of that board have come and sat with your town administrator and myself on more than one occasion, and we've talked about the 200, the William Street application, not about this...
Did they give an opinion on this? I guess obviously...
I haven't heard about an opinion on this from them yet, no. This is the, yeah, my guess is, and I don't want to put words in their mouth, this is the kind of thing they would be quite supportive of, is using your industrial parks for cultivation and processing. It's jobs, it's host community fees, it's, you know, it's all, yeah.
Any questions or comments from the, from the public? Okay?
So that would have to go to town.
It would go to town meeting. So what we're, what is proposed before us is that this board votes to recommend the changes here that we've just described. And then it would be on the special town meeting warrant, and then during the course of the meeting, we would recommend these changes, assuming that we're voting to...
Right, because right now it's just approved at William Street, right?
Yes, yes. And, and there have been many discussions in the past about industrial zones allowing. And in fact, there was some, some had the opinion that, that it was not required because it was the industry of growing marijuana, so it was already an allowable use, but it was a gray area. So this would, this zoning, this bylaw change would take that gray area and make it black or white, correct?
That's the way I see it, yes, Mr. Chairman, that's, that's a good summation. And of course, at town meeting, it's a zoning amendment, so it'd take two thirds vote at town meeting.
It takes two thirds, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I guess there may be some members of the town that are all for it, and then there may be some members of the town that live near, near mill buildings that would be dead set against it. It would be a matter of who shows up.
And, and Mr. Chairman, what's interesting about this is, even those that live near the mill buildings...
They won't even know.
They won't even know, except for the fact that the facade, you know, the whole place will be maintained very well. You know, there's no sign, there's no extra traffic, there's, I mean, it's just another industrial use in the building, you know, so...
It won't be a recreational...
Dispensary.
Dispensary.
Yeah, no retail.
It'll be either growing or laboratory or edible.
Is that spelled out in this change?
In fact, if you look through the change, in 2918, retail is expressly precluded in the proposed change. So it's not even just that it's not included, it's precluded, it's like not, it's intentionally disallowed. So it's not something they have to worry about lots of traffic.
So our retail district would remain on...
That would remain. But this would also empower the board for One Connection to expressly give a waiver, because 200 Williams, you know, from my analysis of the history, 200 Williams was contemplated, and that should have, that was something that, that's addressed that was contemplated for this use. And unfortunately, we need a, we need a waiver from setback requirements because of the way it all shook out. And this would expressly empower the board to do that.
And what about 620 Spring Street? Will you need a waiver for that too? Because I don't know exactly how close it is to the church.
Well, we're trying to figure out. It looks like we're far enough away from any residences under your current bylaw. We were just talking about measurements. So, Michael's actually an engineer, but I don't think he's done the exact measurements yet. So it was, it was marginally, you know, far away. And I think it was a ball field that was the issue, right?
Yeah, quarter mile to the park.
Yeah, and so that, and so, you know, it's not K through 12.
Well, I think it's only 1,000 feet.
Yeah, so we...
You're more than 1,000 feet from the ball field. Because I live right next to the ball field.
Yeah, but I think it was, I think it's outside, but I didn't want to say it.
Yeah, no, you're good there. It's just the church would be my concern.
I don't know, I don't even know if the church would be in offending you, so we'd have to do that analysis with the Cannabis Control Commission in your bylaw, so...
Any other questions, comments? So...
I would like to, I mean, I don't see how we can make a decision tonight. If you want to try, go ahead. I don't see how we can approve something at the 11th hour without it being seen by our local advisory board and Board of Health. Be honest with you.
You know, I would urge, just because if we don't do this, if we don't get this approved, at least a recommendation tonight to go to town meeting. But the advisory board and the Board of Health would still have the option at town meeting to speak up and say, "I want to speak on this issue, and we reviewed this, and either we agree or we don't agree." And that's what town meeting's for. This just allows the voters who have been supportive of the industry in Dayton so far to weigh in on it in October as opposed to waiting till next spring. And that will, you know, set back, you know, those that want to cite in industrial... And this is not just for them, this opens up other parcels. So we didn't try to draft this only for them. So to the extent that, you know, we could invite the Board of Health and the advisory board to participate at town meeting, that would, to the extent that I can persuade the board to do anything, it would be to recommend this to town meeting, and then they can speak up then and say whether they approve or disapprove. And my guess is that they're not going to have any opposition to this, although of course, I don't want to put any words in their mouth. But I hate to put this off for, for six months for something that is really not necessarily an issue that can be resolved because they have the opportunity to speak.
And they would have, they would have three weeks, or was it three weeks till the town meeting? Or it's more like a month? They'd have a month to weigh in, to consider it.
Mr. Pyers, is this the chairman of the Board of Health?
So I guess I know that what all happens. It was for opposition. I, I met with her, I believe she did, she's the one who encouraged me to be here tonight. So there, so she knows that I was doing this, and she's managing the warrant for today, so I believe that she did.
Okay, that was my concern, because I was told that the warrant poses tonight, which we're here tonight. So that's my concern, was making sure she put a placeholder in there, and then that'll give us time to have our council.
I don't know...
Is that not something you would want?
Frankly, I don't know exactly what the procedure that she did with the warrant is. But I met with her at 5:45 this evening, and she, you know, she told me to be, to be here in that presentation, so...
I will clarify that with her. I think the other thing that we have to keep in mind too is that by doing this, we're going to have, it requires a public hearing and a publication in the paper. So we've got to be mindful of the darn frame on that as well.
Well, my recommendation is that we, that we vote to approve, and if we do so approve, that, that we get consultation from our attorney, let the other boards of the town weigh in. And if by the time of the, of the town meeting, we come to, and we will have one of our meetings between now and then, if we come to the conclusion that, that we, that the vote was done in error, then we can rescind our recommendation. I mean, it is, it is at 11th hour, but...
No for, to advertise.
I thought we had discussed not granting waivers and referring to ZBA. I don't know if we're, we're facing that also.
Well, I think that discussion that we had last meeting was what the options were at this point with the proposal of 200 Williams. And our council had returned back saying that right now, as the bylaw stands right now, that you have to go to ZBA. And then there was the other two options that our council had come back with, was either reducing the footage from a residential, which I think you guys were all of the opinion, no, you didn't want to do that. Or amend the bylaw so that you guys can be the granting authority as well. And I think you guys were still, I didn't, I don't recall hard enough on that, I just recall something that you guys were thinking about.
We were thinking, I don't think anyone...
No, I don't think there was an official vote, but...
I hate to Mr. Boatlin, 620 Spring Street, because I think that location would be a key location for something for many reasons. Water, cheap electricity, and sewer. Anybody with a good business plan is going to look at that and say, "There's a lot of space there. Cheap, cheap electricity from the TMLP, water and sewer." It's a great location for something like that.
And I bring you an engineer and a quality group who wants to cite there, who's been working with the landlord to do it, so it's like, yeah.
You, you agree?
I agree, yes.
Right, I mean, you know, like, the difference is night and day between electricity rates between North Dayton and Dayton. You know, and you're going to use a lot of electricity growing marijuana.
Besides that, he lives close to high, he likes marijuana.
No, I don't like it. Okay.
I think we legalized it.
Letting me back on track, as far as, as far as the authority that grants the waivers, we are the authority that gives site plan approval and is the permitting authority for all the marijuana stuff, so we may as well be the authority that, that grants the waivers. It doesn't, it's not like we're, it doesn't streamline the process by us being the granting authority, but it certainly doesn't make it more complicated. So in that case, it does streamline it a little bit.
Why send us downstairs?
That's my point, well, we're downstairs.
Yeah, we're downstairs too, usually.
Thought we were here.
But again, you know, it just, I don't, I wouldn't say that we have a level of expertise in this yet. But as we do it longer and longer and have more experience, we'll gain that expertise. And so it will be, rather than the ZBA have to learn what we've already learned by hit or miss, if we are the waiver, if we are the permitting granting authority already, we may as well be the authority that can or decides against waivers.
And basically what it does, it gives, it empowers you to say, "This address makes sense to me for one of these businesses, and this one doesn't."
As opposed to saying, "This, this makes sense to us, go get their approval."
Yeah, go get their approval from them who aren't thinking about this issue. And, Mr. Chairman, if I might, for Mr. Pyers, if you would like, I'm happy to make a presentation both to the Board of Health and to your working group between now and town meeting on this bylaw, and answer all of their questions for both these groups and both these addresses. I know I already have for 200 William Street with your advisory board. So I'm happy to come back to both boards, to the Board of Health and to the advisory board, and discuss both these addresses, both groups, both proposals, if, if that would give you a sense of comfort between now and town meeting.
Certainly makes sense to me. But I don't think it's, it's our job to tell you what to do to promote your own interests.
I want to make sure that all members of the board...
This does not, at this point at least, create an overlay in 620 Spring. You know that, right?
No, it doesn't.
Yeah, that's what the waiver, that's what the waiver provision is for. So, this creates, 620 Spring is in your industrial, is in your industrial overlay district.
Correct.
And this adds your industrial overlay district to where these marijuana establishments might be. That's 2918, as well as those parcels in the industrial district and industrial overlay district.
Okay.
And then if we have a setback issue, which we're unclear as to whether we have or not, this would further empower the board to say, "Look, those 49 feet that you might be messed up with, we're going to give you a waiver for those," you know?
Right.
Yeah.
Or if those 49 feet are, are the church, and in the process, the church group comes out en masse to be against it, well then, you may be able to deal with it at that point.
Yeah.
But at least we are the ones dealing with it.
And if, and if it turns out that, you know, we get to that point, we'll go meet with the church, I'll make a presentation to them. I mean, the whole point is community buy-in and talking to folks about this, you know, absolutely.
Right, as far as revenue goes for the town, would that be a 3% of your gross profit?
You know, so I would, I would work with, with Mallory, with Ms. Ehren, your town administrator, Ms. Ehrenstein, to work on the host community agreement. I mean, I don't want to commit for our clients, this is cultivation and processing only, there's no retail component to this. So if you look at the comps throughout the Commonwealth on the host community agreements, when you're hiring and doing all that other thing, it's not necessarily three points off the top for cultivation and processing, because there's no retail. So we've done many of these throughout the Commonwealth. But Ms. Ehrenstein has got the best possible deal you can get legally in the, in the last host community agreement I did with her, so her, your interests are very well protected.
I've been reading the Boston Globe though, and a lot of these communities are signing on to community host agreements, offering these communities lump sums of money, which is illegal.
We have a cash payment in ours as well.
Yeah, but the state's saying that's not right.
It's not legal.
Right, that's like double dipping. It's not legal.
If it exceeds the 3%, it's illegal.
Right.
So that's what they're doing.
It exceeds the 3%.
You should see some of it, they're just egregious.
So a lot of these people who had applied for the licenses through the cannabis commission...
Control Commission, yeah.
Are now being demanded, they're not getting their license because they already made an agreement with the city or town to pay them X amount of dollars plus the 3%.
We've been meeting with the commission on...
And I think the law's clearly written that, you know, we're just supposed to get our 3%.
Yep.
Right, no, no kickbacks or whatever.
Yeah, Mr. Woods, that's, that's exactly right. We've been meeting with the commission on that exact issue, my partner...
And if you're going to grow the product and it's going to be worth X amount of dollars, then we'll get 3% of that, because that's what I'm asking.
And so that's what I'm going to leave up to Ms. Ehrenstein to negotiate with my clients to approve the contract. Typically, for, without a retail component, it's not 3%, it's a little bit lower. And that's what the comps are, and I'm happy to show you other host community agreements that don't have the retail component built into them. Because ultimately, these guys got to remain competitive with other groups that are cultivating and processing, so... But I, but I don't want to, I don't want to get ahead of that issue.
No, the cart is well before the horse at this point.
There will be, there will be a host community agreement, there will be preferential local hiring, there'll be, you know, interaction with law enforcement, there'll be cash host community payments based on their production and sales, there'll be all those things. I just don't know what the numbers are right now, is the only thing.
Nor do we need to discuss them at this point.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I want to make sure to answer everybody's questions, especially our biggest advocate, I don't... Right. Yeah, I mean, I want to make sure to answer everybody's questions, especially our biggest advocate. I don't want to talk.
Well, we're having a public hearing on this matter, so you know, by then, if anybody has any other input to offer, I'll I'll just tell them to come at that time.
Yeah, we do have a public hearing process at the planning board level as well as the town.
Now, this is going to cover all of our industrial districts.
That's the goal. So it wasn't just for them and their.
Then it would be up to the owner of the property whether they wanted to take advantage of it or not.
Okay. And Mr. Pires, there's a few others. I mean, they're then also the host community agreement. It's totally arbitrary whether your town enters into one or not. You can keep a business out just by saying, no, I refuse to sign a contract with you. You know, I mean, everything else we have in order. We have zoning. We have everything. We feel like we can get permitted.
Yeah, there's many steps ago, I know.
Yeah, so it's like, you know.
No host agreement, no.
No, yeah, we can't apply at the state level, so. So you have safeguards. If if you have a bad actor or a bad location, you know, that otherwise might fit, you still have safeguards to prevent the citing of that business.
I mean, I I just would have liked to seen some recommendations. I'm okay with it now. I would have liked to seen recommendations. We did receive recommendations from several boards for us to accept the road because you were sitting there, listening to it, but not one recommendation from any boards for this, you know, and I just kind of feel like it's being thrown at us. But I read it four times while you were talking. I wasn't paying attention to it.
It's probably smart.
But I'm pretty much okay with it.
Thank you.
I would be in favor on the vote. And as I'm gonna tell people on the other committees and boards, if you have a problem, go to the public hearing and voice your opinion. And we can amend it then or whatever.
So would anyone like to make a motion to amend the marijuana establishment's bylaw as written?
So moved. Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Yes. I'll be in this in the next couple of weeks to get if I can get in front of the board of health and and with the working group, so thank you.
Okay. Item I on, if if I may, take something out of order here.
Sure.
Uh, Barrowby Brothers are here at the advisor of Kerry to come in at quarter of six.
Oh.
Um, but they didn't get it on the agenda. So I don't know what happened there, but they've been here since quarter of six.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Say that again.
No, the Barrowby Brothers. Were they supposed to be on agenda for a second?
Not that I was aware of.
Okay.
I didn't know they were requested to be on the agenda.
Okay.
Who's that?
Yeah, I was just hoping to be in quarter of six because I was gonna be on first to six o'clock.
By whom? By whom? By her?
When did I say that?
Last week.
Regardless, it's fast.
The last discussion that we had.
If we could hear them next, it's probably.
For the extension.
I'm gonna get a message after that. Just make sure I hear it by six o'clock because I'll be first on. And it's a good thing because my brother had. That's the only one we can all.
Brother had to be a misunderstanding.
Something, yeah.
So I was apologize and move forward. Yeah, that's it. Can't turn the clocks back.
So what can we do for you?
If we could take them out of order, that would.
Yeah, this is in the public input portion, number five, maybe out of order, but step right up.
Bob Barrowby, early engineer. We designed the subdivision back in two thousand seven. Well, I don't think anybody reviewed it. What's his name? Actually, yeah, it was initially reviewed by Peter Williams, who's still a consultant. When we designed in two thousand seven, it was designed with underground structures, stormwater control. We didn't build it as when we got approved. The economy was terrible back then, so we just kept going on. Kept turning in letters, just asking for continuation for the construction of the building. Around two thousand fourteen, the board changed the regulations to allow above ground stormwater control. So then we revised the plan to handle that instead. And then again, Peter Williams did his firm review, the stormwater calculations and the new construction plans. The definitive plan was submitted originally in two thousand seven was never changed. So the lots that were created and the pond lot, all that remains as was originally prepared. So we put in the news. We put the new design in. He reviewed it and said it was it met his requirements and it was considered by the board at the time a minor modification and it was approved. So Kenny, my brother, is still working on it. He's somebody who might be interested in partnering with him. All he made overhead to build it, but we just wanted to make sure that everything was still enforced, that he would be able to proceed with that because it looks like somebody might have happened. Economy is a little bit better than it was before, so we that's all we were looking for. So the question was raised, you know, just to see if it was.
To it than that, because we talked about this. There was a period of time in excess of three years that no work was done. And it should have been rescinded, which he didn't get a notice. However, there are some circumstances that have to review. My feeling is, and we don't have a packet of the history.
But if you wish. This was Old William Street, correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right, okay.
Bob, can you kind of like come here and explain the timeframe?
So everybody. Because I want everybody to understand that. What we did is we went through our records and without bringing boxes of stuff in, Ken, who works in my office, Kenny's wife, went through some of the correspondence that we had. So just like for timelines, again, it was approved and I think it was initially dated two thousand seven, February fourteenth, and it was revised based on town comments, May twenty-ninth, two thousand seven. So this was the original plan that was submitted. It was. There's an existing house on this lot and then there were proposed five lots beyond that and then a pond lot in the back. So originally, two thousand nine, after it was approved, we submitted a letter on behalf of Kenny asking for some additional time, a one-year extension, and then that was granted. Then in September thirty of two thousand ten, we again asked for a one-year extension and that was granted.
That was a whole. What was the timeframe between that?
Between the two. Yeah, November seventeenth and then September thirtieth. One was two thousand nine and one was two thousand ten. Then that was granted and then we I don't have.
So that's a good story now, but that's good to know, right?
Yeah, I would guess so. And then we kept working on it. We went to the submitted a letter to the zoning board in two thousand thirteen. And like these are all the copies of that package, they were originally. And then that was submitted two thousand thirteen and then March nineteen, two thousand fourteen, we submitted another letter to the planning board. That's when we changed the construction plans and then that's when what Peter reviewed. And then March, March second, two thousand fifteen, we submitted another planning board to him, responding to his comments that he had from the original submittal. And then he responded again, March fourth, two thousand fifteen, to the comments. And then in two thousand, December twenty-first, two thousand fifteen, he said attached to my comments regarding the modifications. And that was from Peter to Heidi at the time. And then in March thirteen, two thousand fifteen, he sent a email to us. He says, I'm okay with the soil design we discussed and your voice message today.
I think that's more the documentation that you showed me the other day.
Okay. And then November seventeen, two thousand fifteen, we submitted another letter to the planning board and that was regarding standard eight, regarding erosion control, sanitation, pollution plan. So I responded to those comments from Peter and then standard nine, operation maintenance. So that went to the planning board. And then January twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen, Peter Williams responded to the planning board and he said the representing the comments and he put down the the modify. He talked about the modifications of the site. He says we revised some of the modifications. We submitted a response to his comments letters and and if you could have it closed enough, just says it represents the results of it, so. He just responded. They were addressed. It says efficient information has addressed Peter Williams outstanding review comments. And then again, that was January twenty-fifth, two thousand sixteen. And the last correspondence I got from the board was an email from Heidi and it said that she checked into the file of modifications. Were considered minor modifications the board. The board considered the she put moving of the basin. It wasn't really a moving because it stayed the same location, but she wrote the moving of the basin was minor modifications and and approved. So that's the last correspondence that we got and that was dated October fourth, two thousand seventeen, so almost a year ago, so.
When was the last request for an extension?
I don't know when we formally ex, you know, requested it. The only two that I found was the one in two thousand nine, two thousand ten, but we kept working on it because we were working with the board department. The board department reviewed it. We gave them their review money and and then they asked about doing some additional things on the subdivision because all the changes were really dealing with the construction of the subdivision. It wasn't anything dealing with lot sizes or frontages. All the stuff that was done back initially all still conformed to the planning board regulations. So it was really working with the board department. Even to this day, we've been contacted by the board department because now they're asking us if we could. When we originally designed this, I also designed the subdivision behind it. It comes from Old Williams and then comes up to Lewis Street, Shop Lot Road. There's a small dead end that comes down here with the cul-de-sac, so now they've been in contact with us because when we talk about doing this, they're asking us now if we would consider looping the water through the property and into the cul-de-sac so that they could tie it together and eliminate a dead end because we're gonna have a dead end over here and we're gonna have a dead end over here. So this has even been within the last month or so that we're still dealing with the board department and we told them we would consider that if we go forward with the project. So that's the point we'd like to get to is just to make sure that we can go forward with the project.
Yeah, the point I was trying to make, and I'm not opposed to approving it this evening, is that the last formal extension was in two thousand eleven. About three years have passed and no construction left and they're gonna. However, a reasonable person would think that it's still alive because of correspondence going back and forth over those five years, six years.
Yep.
Um, and there was no need to ask for another extension because it was still still an active, ongoing project.
Yeah.
Even though no construction. I just want everybody to be aware of.
Yeah, whether it was.
All of that.
Yeah, neglect from our end or whatever, but that is exactly what it was because we felt like when we came back in with the revisions to the pond, because that was a big item. That was a very expensive item and it's designing systems all over the place. I don't really like underground structures because you can't see what you're dealing with. So when that came back and we went back, the board, we doubled the board and it was reviewed. Nobody contacted us at times and says, oh, by the way, project's no good anymore. So we just kept going with it with the modifications and it was reviewed and it was approved. So that's that. That was the only reason why we thought it was still active and that's what we're hoping for, that it is still active. So it's where we stand.
My own question, I don't want many of us to know this. I don't know if it's a zoning board by law or is it also affects us that only two extensions can be granted and at the end of those two extensions, you have to start all over. I know the zoning board, there is an issue of that only two extensions can be granted. I don't want that applies to the planning board. I don't know.
In my opinion, the correct thing to do is to get our council to weigh in because it may.
I mean, I I have no no issues with that at all, but you know, I'm just saying, I don't want to see us.
I understand. I understand the the logic of it. You disagree with the logic of it, but if that if as a result of us not going through town council means that we have to do it again and again and again to others in a similar situation, I would rather get get an attorney to weigh in. I think it would be probably best if what you described, you could write a letter to us.
Okay.
And then we can have our attorney read it rather than us write the letter.
Sure.
Probably could put it in.
Yeah, I can provide documents.
Documents. It could be even be an email, I think.
Could you make a package of that, Bob?
Yeah.
Because I don't. I think I don't think you gave me as much information.
Have. I just.
Just turn them all in.
We found what we could find and I mean, we just looked just to see what we could find. I could even go through.
Yeah, it would be in your best interest to see what else we could find. And again, I don't. I just don't know the answer, so I would rather not not be the one to provide it.
Yeah, that's fine, because that's all we want is just to know what we need to do to proceed, so wherever it comes from, real care is what matters. So I'll do that. I'll put a partnership together and just go cartological order and just explain what happened and what the steps that we took and then we'll go from there. I'll copy it also and then we'll send it right to the.
Well, there was only two requests for a session.
Yeah, that way. That I found. I mean, there may have been more, but like I said, it's by the time you get done with the subdivision, there's several boxes and just to get to this requires a lot of paper, so I'll go through the paperwork.
I did try to, because I came across Tom had given me the copies I gave him.
Okay.
Um, and so and I noticed the letter from GZA with his comments. So what I did was I was waiting for Tom Parker to get a copy of all the meeting notices to see if there was a meeting that I could at least view.
Sure.
And we find out if the form of vote was taken, because I have I have not been able to locate the minutes. If I remember correctly, I came across one issue, which I think was relative to the conversation in the letter that you have with GZA and there was something scheduled on one of the meeting agendas, but it didn't state specifically what it was. So I did request from the cable committee a copy of that video to see what transpired during that meeting. I hope that there was an extension request in there and it just wasn't formally done. So that's that's where I was left off was on the research on my part, trying to find the paperwork as well. But if you want, just get the information together and you can email it to me and then I can just send it right off to the council.
Yeah, then we'll just wait and see what they say. We'll let them decide and then they can tell us one way or the other what we need to do to get it back on track because that's all we're looking for.
Okay.
Nothing's changed in the regulations, so if it means resubmitting it.
Get that done in a couple of weeks.
I'm sorry?
I wonder if we can get that done in a couple of weeks.
I'm I'm hoping Cable got my request and they said they were working on it. So I'm hoping I can get that as soon as possible. I don't know how long it takes for them because again, that was in two thousand fourteen.
No, sorry.
It was.
No problem at all.
There was. Yeah, there was no problem at all. It didn't affect my meeting downstairs and we're going back to the office anyway tonight, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys.
Take it back.
Okay, items I, Matt.
Has your bath time yet?
Yeah. I got it though.
Matt Warhurst, our favorite project, Maris Development.
We I spoke with Mr. Warhurst today and he says he's on top of anything, but I drove out there and I didn't see anything different than it was before. They also told me they got rid of the pile of stumps that was there and they are still there. And I was also told that we got this information from the assessor, I believe Kerry, that who came home that the property was sold.
But I will turn it over to the people who live in the area and uh.
Are you the building owner?
No, no.
Oh, God.
Get me out of it. You don't want any more of it, trust me.
I know, I thought he was coming.
Contrary information.
So he's not coming?
Apparently not.
Apparently not.
No, I told him, take care of the punch list, we'll inspect it, and I want you to come with the residents.
Okay, so.
So we can talk about their concerns, but now you're starting to enlighten me.
So since um I tried to take video of the stump burying and I've talked to Mr. Figaroa.
I have video.
And you came out and they left and no one's been back.
It took only four minutes.
Nothing's been there since, right?
No one has been there since.
Abandonship.
Yep.
And when, I'm sorry, when was that?
That was the day I called.
That was only three weeks ago.
Yep.
Yeah.
August, last week.
So with all the people coming in and out, because one man was hired to just cut the trees down and apparently it was only supposed to cut down lot one, according to the conservation. So according to conservation, um.
This just goes on.
Yeah, so where is it?
Oh my God.
See? The gentleman that keeps coming and saying he is what's gonna build the houses doesn't own the properties, according to assessment. Because did he buy the properties? Because I was under the understanding that the properties had liens on them and no liens had been paid.
Correct.
So no one's bought the property, it's still under Madeira Ventures' care of Palmer River Development. That's what I was under the.
Is that the way they have original deeds?
I don't know.
I don't think so.
It was like two years ago.
No, because Palmer River originally owned it.
Yes.
And then. Do you want us, Madeira bought it.
Sorry, we're not used to my.
Definitely not, you're good, you're good.
Forget what me and you.
So the way it was brought up to me was I had gotten a notification from the assessor's office that there was a new deed reported with a new owner. I was in the assessor's office to understand what was going on and lo and behold, the new owner and he stated as such, I am the new owner, I'm here to get a sign off for a building permit. And I said, for where, and he said Maris Lane and said and forget who he had spoke to to get the building permit sign off for, and then he says, all right, well, where's the planning department? And I said, that's me, and I said, don't even bother, I said, because you're not getting a sign off from me. And I advised him of the conditions that for, the reasoning why was that there was a lot of outstanding issues that had to be clarified before they could even be considered for a building permit and even so before they have that, they had to clean up everything that was going on and then appear before the planning board to get approval and a vote to move forward.
Because as of September thirteenth, the ownership for the vacant lots on Maris Lane, as recorded with the board of assessors, is Madeira Ventures' care of Maris Development LLC.
Okay, so apparently, and I have the property card, I don't have it right in front of me, it says that, it says the first one and then the Maris Development, which is my understanding, is who the new owner is.
So.
But Madeira Ventures, so.
And that's.
What's happening here is.
Seems a lot of stuff.
Sounds like it's.
I think we're doing a review that I've seen, so that would be a bad skirt around.
Yes, there was the question from the tax collector who approached me saying, how did this happen?
Because there are liens.
Because there are liens on that and I said, well, there's nothing in our records or I haven't been able to find anywhere that they're required to notify us on top of if they're gonna mortgage or get financing to buy the property, they would do the title search and that's when it would be flat.
Because Madeira Ventures is the lender.
Right, so what I'm thinking is it's a cash deal. No title search was done, so none of this information. Right. That's the only grasp I can get on that.
The way, for whatever reason, I don't know why, if you would even, he telling the truth, another gentleman that was clearing the lawns that I spoke to on Friday. Is understanding the situation, he was subbed out by the new Maris Development, who was due to be subcontractor.
Is this Warhurst?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, I don't know what that name is.
Honestly, you don't even know.
I know.
So the guy that cut the trees was only supposed to cut lot one.
Right.
That both lots were cut and then they went back to the conservation to see if they could cut down eight and nine at the same time.
A lot one answered.
And by that time, I had called you and conservation now knew not to let it happen. So then, um the gentleman who cut the trees down, just cut the trees down, not stump. Um the company that came in, which I found out who they are.
College, C O U C H.
Um.
That was his guys, Matt Warhurst, he said.
Yes, but he was sub from Warhurst or one of the new owners.
So they buried.
Are they the new owners?
The perimeter of lot one and the back of lot one and two.
I think what's happening is they're gonna be, I have no, nothing back itself, but I would guess something is being attempted is that the way that all women to clear the lot was playing to me was that these guys would be a subcontractor of Madeira Ventures. So they would pull the permits and they would have nothing to do with the development, the streets, the easements, nothing to do with that. They would just build the two or four houses left and then Matt would go.
And sell them.
Would sell them. That's all it explains to me.
Right, so now since you left, because I went to videotape it happening and everything shut down.
I have video of them.
The machine that was there to clear lot one and what's out of lot?
Two.
Lot one and two.
Mm-hmm.
Is that the same machine that dug the drainage behind your houses?
No.
No, totally different, Madeira Ventures paid for that piece of, and and honestly, it's working.
Yeah, surprise.
But again, it hasn't been approved yet.
It's working now because it's a summer. We've never had flooding in the summer, it's always been April, March, when the ground's frozen, we have to melt and then we have rain.
Right.
That's when we see the flood. I don't, I'm not ready to say it's working right now, yeah, fine, some water's going in.
Well, the rain.
All the happy hat, I mean it's.
I mean, if the water is going in now.
Yeah, you would think it would help.
Yeah, yeah.
But as I, as we go, you know, as this goes on, again, more water, certain lot inside gets cleared. It's substantially higher than my lot. You know, it's pitched, the entire lot's pitched towards my lot, not just, you know, I would assume it would have to get pitched towards the backs or the easement, it's just a disaster. You know, we just had all this rain, now we got more water coming into the blocks, it's.
I think that if we put a stipulation when he comes in that he has to make sure that that next, the lot one and two don't drain on the lot three, which is his.
It's got to be that one.
Uh?
I mean, the easement's there, it's not an idea, but to me, it's just gonna be pitched towards that easement.
The other problem is, and this is the town's problem, the pipes are too high in the front, so no water's draining to the irrigation pond because the pipes are set too high, just like they were between our lines. Um and the irrigation pond has not been fixed, it hasn't been touched, the silt is going into the pipes, which is gonna clog the pipes. I mean, I don't want to take ownership for something that is broken.
I guess ultimately, I'm sure you guys are sick of seeing us, that nothing is happening.
Nothing.
You know, nobody's taking care of, like, I have, I have to go re-mac around the fire hydrants, I have to clear the shrubbery up front. I have to, I go up there with a frickin' leak blower to clean up the drain, the storm drains, because it's just, nothing is happening. And we're just, it's it's to the point now where it's, I'm, I'm now getting to the point where I know you guys used to laugh, but I am now frustrated, I'm done. I can't keep coming to these meetings, I don't want to keep bothering you guys, something needs to happen. I'm sick of dealing with this problem, I have no idea what owns the properties. I I asked for hay bales to be put between my lot and lot two before they cleared it, that didn't happen. Now I got branches, mulch, you know, coming into my yard, they just chip wood, it full of my house, you know, it's it's, I've had it. Playing it simple.
We got a gentleman who really owns the property.
Yeah.
And then and then if it's Madeira, he has net to come in here.
Well, they still can't be issued any building permits, right?
No, absolutely.
So I just, I just want, I don't want.
So we're just gonna have to live like this? Because if so, then we need to go before the tax assessor because our properties cannot be sold for what we purchased them for.
I couldn't sell my house if I even did at the wrong moment, just because they're gonna see, what is this thing, the backyard, y'all? It's it's a joke.
So what was I gonna say, they were there for calling it?
Hang on, I can say it right now.
And um so I've been in touch with the town administrator who said that the attorney general might need to be notified with regards to this and I don't know.
So they they pulled off site the week of August twenty seventh, because twenty fourth was the day that they.
What was the day I was out there and talked to him about the stumps?
So it was, I was, that was my last day before I went back to work, so I went back to work. The twenty fourth, you were there.
Yeah.
Friday, the twenty fourth.
Yes.
Because then I went back to work and when I came back, either that Monday or Tuesday, everything's gone.
That's when I thought.
You had to argue on the twenty fourth.
Right, I left a message to you because I was like, you've got to be kidding me then, and if we weren't watching, who's watching?
There's gotta be those fifty, sixty stumps buried on the property. Until I even opened up on the twenty fourth in the morning.
We said close to a hundred.
Well, I know there's three burial spots.
Yeah, I said, you can bury this stuff.
If you only have one.
Yeah, at least three, because they were going before we even contacted.
There's one on your property line and one on the uh south property line.
Yeah.
So like I said, I I'm sure there's not much you guys can do at this point, so I was just stay steadfast on.
Well, Concom's doing an enforcement order on the stumps.
Yes.
Uh so we can get those out of there.
Ultimately, my my biggest concern is that it's just gonna be, he's gonna get another shy builder and another shy site guy. I'm gonna be back here in six, seven months saying, hey, guys, the this site's the house to build, I'm getting more water again and then I'm right back to square one, I can't, I can't live like this anymore.
I'm sure that's a D E P violation too.
Right, we had talked about that, so, but I think according to the town administrator, it it really needs to come from the town filing against and not
No.
us. And you know, it just goes on, like the piping, that you had said to him, you guys laughed at piping that that he used. His thing that he put up is still there.
Yeah.
That green little pipe is still there, the irrigation pond still has silt going into those pipes, who's gonna clean those pipes up?
All storm, all catch bases are full, weed, sand, it's it's a joke.
Because you guys kind of put sand bags up at one point, oh, those have gone into our storm drains.
Question I have is that your saw pump is being, they put, they use the the green pipe.
Yes.
I don't know, where's that draining?
Into the pipe.
The thirty-six inch one.
So they drilled a hole.
And and I have to tell you, my saw pump has not been running like it was before they put the system to work, honestly.
Did you see any comment about the drains at the end of the road with the pipes?
No, it's all kind of, all right.
Do we know?
No, an animal can't come.
I can't recall any.
My question is, if we find out that Matt still owns that property, we've already given him plenty of um.
Road.
Yeah, there you go.
But honestly, I don't think Matt owns it, Madeira Ventures owns it and that's Joe Ferrera out of Rehoboth, that's who owns that.
Sorry.
Okay, so we've given them plenty, if it's the same ownership, we've given them plenty of road.
Oh, as a matter of fact, now, the people that they were, there I was excavating, they told me that and they may have slipped. Mr. Ferrera is a nice guy.
Absolutely, and that's why I told you.
Well, that's great, but you know, the the thing is, can we look into through our attorneys to see what the next thing is, because as I said, this is not, you know, they're they're playing games with us and we're allowing them to.
Start right before.
They do have money in the pond, right?
Yeah, but it's not enough to cover.
Not enough to cover, it wouldn't even.
Close.
Especially the pipe in the front, that's gonna be a big problem.
The street itself's starting to be, even starting to work up because it's not blinded, it's it's just, I mean, it's just the bind that goes, you see a lot of chunks of pavement starting to come out. The the side barriers there.
Yeah, I know how much is in there, but I'm not, I don't share it at this time, there's not enough here.
Right, but I mean, especially for the bridge. And that bridge is being destroyed because no water can flow, so the water is just sitting on top of it, on that bridge, and that's Dyton's. That's not Maris Lane's, homeowners association.
That's my other concern too, is that at some point, this is gonna be our problem. I don't trust what's been installed to date to to have the homeowners association take this over, so I don't even know what to do about that. You know.
You don't have one, do you?
No, because the town all the lots built and it's only thirty dollars a month, that's what it is, to maintain the irrigation pond. That's what the homeowners association in the original agreement was saying.
Is responsible for, what happens with the road and.
I don't know, I don't know, because it's, I'm assuming this.
Well, anything above is Dyton. And anything below is us, so I'm worried because now lot five is filled with um rock. So I said to the guy, you know a lot of rock back there, he goes, oh, dynamite works wonders, whoa. So now you're gonna start blowing up next to my house, dynamite, are you kidding me? And are you gonna disturb all that pipe that's running?
Right, right. Who are these people?
Is lot five one of the fire hydrants?
Yes.
Yes, he's gonna dynamite it, I'm like, oh, because we have all that pipe that runs all lot five and he's gonna dynamite and he's gonna disturb that pipe and then we're gonna have a three-way circus again? I I don't know.
But I make a suggestion that we look into our attorney to see what we can do. And we start the process because they're just, this is.
I think we've already asked our attorney, he said he can use the bond and then we got right in that catch point too, there's not enough.
So when they have a lien. How long do you have a lien before the town can take the property?
Is it a tax lien or a permit lien?
I think it's a construction lien.
I don't, I don't know.
It's a lien from us plowing the roads, I think, right?
Oh, really?
No, no, I think there's a tax.
No, there's a, there's a tax.
There's a tax lien on the properties.
There's a tax lien on a couple of the properties, it's not the whole thing, from what I understand.
The five properties.
Right, I don't, I'm not sure.
No, it's just.
But I do know that Mary said that there was some tax liens and I believe for her to go, it's at her discretion as to
Does that, does that?
When they foreclose on it, I guess.
Because Mary is the one that would know that.
Mary, yes, we would have talked to Mary about those liens.
Well.
I I really would like something done because this is a, we're being played, played with.
So a year and a half.
Well, our only leverage, our two, three points of leverage are the lien, the the bond and the permits. And we still hold those cards and we obviously aren't gonna give them up, so we need to find out if the, if the when when we can do the tax taking and start squeezing them a little bit. We need to find out at what point does the amount left equal, what work left equal the the uh the the bond. And we probably should find out how long we can not give them any building permits, which could be forever.
I think what we said to begin with, if we stick with it, I know Jim will actually.
Yeah, yeah, he's not gonna.
I think everybody's on the same page, I don't think conservation knew about Maris Lane, but I think everybody knows.
And then we also have the conserva-, so we have four cards, conservation issues. So when they start doing enforcement orders, hopefully.
We have to find out who the owner is now.
Well, I think that's a very high thing to do, but I have a feeling it's the same ownership.
Oh, they said it was Mr. Ferrera.
The only, the only thing that they've done, oh, I know Matt has done a few times, is that he's made companies, you know, started LLCs and purchased stuff from himself to reorganize.
Yeah.
That's the only thing I'm really concerned because he's, I have done every research on him.
But apparently, Madeira Ventures has no contacts by the attorney general in the state of Massachusetts. Matt Antonio does.
So where does Madeira?
Madeira Ventures is out of um, is it Lincoln? Nope, Lincoln, up that way, um you called them.
Didn't, the lady could have been more surprising than what.
Yeah, so like it's a cardio shop.
And some, it's a drink, or they drink from a cardio shop or whatever, it's just a little office.
Really?
They don't have a manual address.
And got very upset, like, oh. So, but I know that Mr. Ferrera out of Rehoboth owns Madeira Ventures.
Ooh, I mean, they were all there, somebody was out there from Madeira or somebody was out there looking at the, the pipe constructed constantly up. Through my cameras and my following, constantly. Two mic cameras and mic following constantly at the house. Somebody was out there looking at it. Somebody had a vested interest in having, like, it completed. That is, I would assume is who owns the property, but it's just to point out, like I said, it's just...
And the builder guy always refers to the lender. The lender's going to fix the road, the lender's going to do this. Who's the lender?
So I was just about there the other day. I noticed that a lot of standing water near the two properties. And a lot of water is actually going towards your lot and the areas.
Because the, because the road drains aren't working either. Like, we've tried to get this most sand away from them.
And that's my ultimate concern is that Lot 2, now that it's cleared, I mean, I had flooding before, but now Lot 2 is gone. There's nothing to absorb any water anymore. Now, like, even this last recent...
And what are we gonna do? Put trees back up? I mean, honestly, what's, because, oops, swinging a stake again?
Yeah, I'm gonna go tomorrow and stick up something down into the catch base and see how high the sand is. It could maybe block the...
Oh, because you let all those bags break open and just fall that you guys required him to put up.
I need some big legal help.
Yeah, I think so.
Anyway.
How much is the bond for? How much do you have bond for that they were having? Do we know?
There's not enough.
It comes last little bit of work.
I mean, honestly, like, I don't...
Yeah, how much is the bond for, and maybe you get a cost to complete from GCA?
It's five houses, four houses. We can walk on the street, we can watch each other, they don't drive past. Do you know what I mean? There are, like, things that I am willing to give up if we can just get this place cleared out.
Anybody interested in mine also?
Carrie, could you find out from the Conservation Commission what type of penalties they're allowed to impose? And just give me a heads up, and maybe we can push the Conservation Commission to impose those penalties. I mean, I don't know what else to do.
I think they're going to.
Well, I think they have a signed paper that said that they couldn't bury stumps and they can only clear one lot. And Matt, they have that paper.
We have to find that.
No, the Conservation has...
The owner.
But why would they be clearing a lot if there's, if there's no building permit?
Well, because...
You can clear it.
Yeah.
The way it explained to me was that the gentleman that was going to build the house would not, would not, wouldn't take any responsibility or anything until he saw the lots cleared. So Matt came, and Matt Antonio supposedly had the lots cleared, so this guy could see who was dealing with it.
Okay.
But he didn't because the other Matt told me today that it's these guys that cleared those lots.
So again, it's all under, you don't, I don't even know anymore. I just try and keep track of who's coming in to do work.
You guys are our biggest asset out there. Keeping your eyes on that and...
Yeah.
Real pains in the ass.
So why do we put the dynamite in the ground? Does that have to get approved by you guys?
They need a permit for that.
Oh, yeah.
I think the board's meant to be notified too.
Perfect. Well, I'll be back.
Oh, we know. I would too if I was in the...
No, we're saying, "Oh, she says next week, well, next time we'll have them here."
Well, we can, we'll try to have them here. We tried to have them here this time.
And honestly, just let me know. I will be here. I know you're frustrated. I don't mind coming and listening and questioning.
Can always watch the video later.
Yeah, I mean, because if I don't...
He will show up.
And then the other, the other guy doesn't have a video, so that's what they are.
He's a good guy.
Yeah.
If we put him first. What if we put him first?
Yeah, try to put you first.
Absolutely, and I will be here. Just let me know. Because I looked yesterday, I didn't see a sign there.
No, and actually, Tom had called me, what was it, this morning? He asked me to revise the agenda.
Yeah, he finally called me back today.
And then he called me back and said he's not coming, so that's why I didn't even...
Because he doesn't want to answer these.
Yeah.
I'm actually wondering if Ferrera knows what's going on.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And I would actually be willing to go talk to him.
He knows something because when we did the original certified letter demanding Matt Antonio to be here, Ferrera was CC'd on that certified return receipt as well.
But Ferrera okayed Matt to speak on his behalf.
Right.
There is a letter somewhere that said, because he came in, Matt went to the letter and said he was speaking on his behalf.
I don't think that Mr. Ferrera would want this kind of reputation on him.
Too late.
No, no, no. My point is, I'm actually wondering if Matt is notifying him of any of this. Matt may be actually creating this, using it as an incentive. He has that letter. It may actually be, uh, and if the board okayed, I'll go...
Yeah, please do, Gorilla. Absolutely.
Let me know because I would rather not just speak to him about all of this. But again, we haven't seen him. I don't even know what he looks like, so... Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. I make a motion for a charter?
No, I know.
He's like...
Sorry. I thought you were just seeing for the fun of it.
Yeah. It's impressive, the range of issues you guys have.
Ooh.
I am really sorry.
Are you here to discuss the proposed special town meeting warrant articles?
No, I'm not.
Well, that is the next thing on our agenda, but we can put that aside. What can we do for you?
I'm hoping just to get some information. I'm interested in building in town and actually building a two-family that would be, um, co-owned and, and, uh, and owner occupied by my wife and myself and my little store.
Is the, is the lot zoned for two-family?
We're looking at various lots, and that was one of the questions.
So you need to have a lot zoned for two-family, or you can do a, a house with an in-law apartment. They are, I think it has to be less than 800 square feet in it.
I may, I may. I don't think they like the idea of an in-law. They want it called a two-family.
Oh, really?
Two families aren't allowed.
Two families aren't allowed, but in-laws are.
Well, I built one on Saturday.
Accessory apartment, that's the word. Okay, accessory apartment.
Yeah, that's it.
So the only way to do a two-family that would be, would be co-owned would have to be already on a lot that's zoned.
Or get a, get a variance from the zoning board of appeals.
Okay.
Which is, has been done.
It has been done.
Yes.
Uh, a guy down the street from me has a single family, and he got a permit for an accessory apartment that's twice the size of the, of the house that he's in. Or it seems that way.
And what the requirements are is that when you build a house, you don't make it look like a two-family. You make it look like a single family with, you know, the apartment, the way you need to. It has to be designed in certain ways.
Speak to the building inspector, who's also the zoning enforcement officer. He can give you chapter and verse on what's allowed and what he likes to see and what he, you know...
Right, that's what I'm looking for, I think.
I think you're looking for an accessory apartment and not a two-family.
Yeah, accessory apartment.
He's on vacation till Monday, the building inspector.
So in that, so it would be speaking to the building inspector, and it would have to go through the zoning?
Not necessarily.
If it's an accessory apartment.
If it's an accessory apartment, it's by right.
Okay.
If it's a two-family, it's, and it's only zoned for one family, you gotta go through the ZBA.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
You almost missed out, but I'm kidding.
I got an education today.
Welcome to Dyton, too.
Good night.
I just bought a house in town.
Do you, do you live in town or...?
I live in Somerset.
On Somerset, okay. This is God's country, as you can see.
So, all right, can I propose special town meeting warrant articles? Are there any?
Okay, so, well, so we...
Yeah, we just got one tonight.
Obviously, that's one we just did. So that, obviously. We also had the request of law, we were planning on calling, trying to come in through special town meeting for road acceptance last fall.
Yeah.
And I guess they weren't completed yet. They are pretty much complete. They're just, um, putting in, planting in a couple trees, and then GCA is going out to do a final inspection on Monday or Tuesday. We have a post-it for a public hearing already, which is gonna be at our next meeting. Um, and as long as GCA comes back with everything fine, which everything going on has been fine, um, then that, that's actually the only thing that we have on the warrant.
Okay.
Um, I tried to get to, get things that we had discussed about some of those bylaw changes, fixing the things, but to the public hearing, I didn't get a chance to get it done, and I figured it wasn't very pressing.
We got enough. I don't know, one thing.
That I'm very concerned about. I don't, I'm looking at the timeline.
Yeah, I don't think so.
To have that public hearing before that town meeting, and unless, I have been told the zoning bylaws, you can have a public hearing the night of the special town meeting, so schedule it an hour before the town meeting. Have that.
We can have it at our next, uh...
It won't be posted.
What doesn't happen?
It's 21 days, right?
It's, uh, yeah. Well, it has to be in the paper published twice, two consecutive weeks, and the first one has to be seven days before they have a public hearing. So they would have had to have been in the paper last week for this.
And when would they submit that?
When would they?
When did that?
When, I just got it on Monday, that, the, yeah. So I'll talk to Mallory about that. I'm not sure what her game plan, unless she has done something on her end, but I haven't heard that.
Right.
Um, so that's why we have a special town meeting. The last thing I have is, a while back, I had sent an email because there is a prospective, an architect who's looking to be proposing the elderly housing on Old Somerset Avenue.
Is that the one that he's been here before?
I don't know if he's been here before.
If it's the same one, we suggested that he had to go to the zoning board of appeals because it wasn't zoned for what they wanted, was it? Wasn't that where we stood?
I don't, I don't, I wouldn't.
I don't know if he was involved with us at that time.
Was that the one up near the golf, near Hunter's Hill?
No.
Oh, okay, yep, 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 yep.
Just north of, one, one lot north of Tremont.
Right.
And, uh...
Wanted to put a triple-decker.
Yeah, he wanted to put some huge monstrosity in that wasn't zoned for it.
Wanted the town to help pay for it.
And it wasn't zoned for it.
Um, so in any of them, they are doing a sidewalk, you know, of anyone from the, Peter, I know you say you have a survey meeting, so you're unavailable.
Next Wednesday, yeah.
Um, this one is scheduled for October 24th, so it's a ways out. I don't know if anyone...
Is that a Wednesday?
Days that fall on.
That's the Wednesday, last Wednesday of October, that's the survey meeting.
Yeah. So we, we do not have a meeting that night.
Is it the fourth Wednesday, then I'll...
It's the fourth one, so you cannot, Tom.
I may be able to. I just gotta, I have to work it out in my work schedule. I may be able to.
Maybe Joe. Yes. All right, so we have, um...
Oh, that's the one that where I said, "Maybe I'll excuse, excuse myself."
Try to work it out, yeah.
I mean, we don't have plenty of time, so that's all I have. I do have some red lines.
So that's a Monday or...
The 24th, October 24th. Um, I did prepare Miranda's decision for his retreat lots. I sent it off to town council for, um, for our, our council for reviews, got some red lines. So I look forward to that for you guys to take a look at. Seems kind of minor. Um, and as long as you guys okay it, we can sign it and have it in the board on that.
Yep.
I think if we get into this, we're gonna have to look at our legal line too.
Yes, it was a very simple one, and he hasn't been...
I'm talking about Maris Lane.
Oh, Maris Lane, yeah. I'm gonna have to talk to, you want me to start with Concom first?
Let's see, what kind of penalties we're talking about? I mean, if it's slap-on-the-hand stuff, then we get, take more action ourselves. And if it's, I'm just looking for leverage to get them to do what's right. And that's just another, Concom is just one more point of leverage. I just don't know how big it is.
Okay.
I'm actually hoping that he is doing all of this without the knowledge of...
Joe Ferrera?
I, everything that I input about Joe Ferrera, about Joe Ferrera is not that way at all.
Is that John's brother? Or somebody different?
John's, I don't know. He's got a...
They're Jim and Jane Matuerian, right? Same people? Well, that's John. I don't know. Formal selectmen, the locals, right?
So that's the correspondence I hope? All right, so would anyone like to make a motion? Joe, the meeting minutes from September 5th. Second, my favor. Tom, last motion.
Uh, Martin, make a motion for John.
All right. Thank you, Gable. Thanks for sticking around.
Did you guys sign the plans?